At this time, we'll call the regular meeting of the Atlantic Community School Board to orders. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Kristy Pellet?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, next item is to approve the agenda. I'd like to suggest that we amend the agenda to move Action Item A to the new beginning.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I welcome our visitors. Do we have any public comments? I don't believe so. So we'll move right on to Action Item A, which is the girls' swimming program for fall of 2024. Oh, excuse me. Roll call.
I was getting to that.
I'm so excited about amending this agenda.
I knew we'd go back. So approving the agenda, Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren? Kristy Pellet?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to Action Item A, which is our girls' swimming program for the fall of 2024. You want us? I know we don't have Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah.
To it, but I think he indicated that we took a break from things, but we believe that we have numbers to support bringing that back for next fall.
And even set the following years after that, swim families and even a year after that, the numbers will grow even more. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, next year's gonna be a little light yet. I'm not even sure that next year's gonna be 100%, but after that, then we should be good.
Yeah. And really the only additional cost would be transportation. We've got coaches, the Y, the facilities, it's all in place.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah.
And so your numbers are based on kids that are coming up through the Y.
They're starting.
That seem to have a high level of achievement and commitment.
Right, we took 22 of them to the state tournament or to the state swimming and there's five of them currently that will be not next year, but that following year, there will be five to six. And we know that, we feel like once we get the program back, then we can try to recruit more from other places too. We just, it's hard to recruit when you don't even have a program, when you can't say, we have a swim program, we'd love to have you come swim for us.
You say that, you mean like other schools?
Even, even in the high school, like that we've had, she had two, two high schoolers approach her and say, hey, I wanna swim. They're a junior and a senior, I think. They approached her, but when we don't have a program, we can't even say, yeah, we'd love having swim for us. So we just kinda wanna get the program going again so that we can hopefully even recruit here.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell had said even other school districts.
Yeah.
Were of interest having kids co-op here. Which would be fun. I mean, it wouldn't increase our.
Yeah, Lauren, I mean, yeah.
Our class staff.
Yeah, Clarinda, we have some coming from Othoka possibly. There, I mean, and in the past, we've, yeah, in the past, we've had swimmers come from all the surrounding areas just because we're, you know, we were the school with the local swim team, so.
And my worry is LC is gonna start to take from, from us because if you can't, if we don't have our own program, then Lewis Central, they go, that's where they go. And so that's why I worry about, like even, I know that's been discussed with Oakland. Well, we currently have boys in our program and they're talking about, well, is Atlantic gonna have a program? Cause now they don't have a girls' program and is the boys gonna have the same problem? Do they have to worry about their numbers? So that's kinda the issue is we're afraid we're gonna lose what we already have to Lewis Central.
Just to put in perspective, it's not all about numbers, even though I mean, that's important too. But two seasons ago, we only had three girls, so they couldn't run a relay, but it's an all one class. So swimming is all one class. There's, it's not by division. And three girls and still one made it to state. And so what they do and how they approach it is of a winning thing. That's not the overall goal, but there's, there's commitment. We've got young coaches who've now come on board that want to do this, you know, before we were worried about our coach who has now sent flaps. Who was gonna come in behind them, and we now have young coaches who are committed to the program, girls and boys. And to me, that's now what's gonna help us build that back. And their teachers, they're in, they're in the district, so they can recruit. We've also been told that some of the special needs kids are who we need to go after. Or some of the officials were talking to us that a lot of these other kiddos don't have other opportunities where they can maybe succeed or, you know, build some of that personal, you know, self-worth and confidence and then seek some success. So last year, there were three young men, so the coaches all got together, they put them in separate events and they were all state champions. Because there's just not enough of them yet, but they're also encouraging that that is another avenue to maybe make them have a sense of normalcy, a sense of pride and commitment, and then a level of success that could change their lives.
Any further discussion from the board?
It's easy discussion for me, I guess. Obviously, the foundation's there, the groundwork's there. It's been nothing but a great program. So I guess I would move to approve the girls' swimming, bringing back the girls' swimming program in the fall of 2024.
Uh, Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Kristy Pellet?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to our presentation, which is the I Association of School Boards. We're going to be, just for those of you who might be watching, we will be doing a board governance work session with our board right now. So we expect that will probably be for the next two hours or so. So in case you want to jump on or jump back off and on, and then we'll move into, we do have some at night later this evening that we will take care of. So I'm gonna turn it over to Luke right now.
Oh, thank you so much. And I'm gonna just ask if Beth or Kristy, if either one of you had any opening statements you wanted to make. You don't have to, but if you would like to, I mean. I, I think we just, we, this board has always been a learning board. And we love the opportunity to sit down at the board table and work on our board governance skills. Well, thank you so much. And so I'm gonna jump to some celebration then, as to your point. Well, first of all, let me just go back and say it's nice for me to be here. I'm Luca Best. I'm on the board development team. You've attended a couple of our things already, so I've seen you in person, Jenny. And I know a few of you, Laura, you're on our board and Josh is here on the floor too. Thank you for having me. One, this is one of our favorite things to do with the IASB, as your association provides you a lot of supports, as you know, from advocacy to school finance and policy, of course. But, and then board development through our events, but coming to work at, with you all at the board table is, I, we think some of our most impactful work, so thank you. And when you said you have a, a culture of learning, yes, you do. In fact, I wanna just point out, I'm gonna just jump to a celebration on the back of your packet. It talks about our annual board award program, which used to be called Better Board Leadership. It's now Annual Board Award. And because three of you have already earned the, your individual award this year, to earn the individual award, you need to earn 15 hours of learning between November 1 and October of the year, and three of you, which is the majority of the board, have already earned individual awards. You've earned the team award. So congratulations.
We don't have to do this.
Yeah.
Thanks for going.
So congratulations. So that's wonderful. And then what that means also for Beth, after tonight, if she earns a few more hours, since she has two or more board members that have earned the individual award, she will earn the board honor, superintendent board honor. So I can visit with you about that. Congratulations to you all to have that idea of, you've already earned a team award, so all to say, good job. And also, I like to say that when you look at the research of highly effective boards and their characteristics, it's probably not a surprise to you that learning together at the board table is one of those traits. And it makes sense, doesn't it? Because if you wanna make form decisions, a good policy, level decision, it takes this kind of learning, both formal and informal, throughout the year. So again, thanks so much for having me. So when I was asked to come, it was right after the election. And anytime there's an election and you have new people on the team, whether it's new hires, I think Lisa, you're fairly new to the team, Beth is, you're fairly new. And then you have a couple of new board members, even one person, you have new team dynamics. So it's beautiful that you're coming together in a proactive way to talk about governance, get you all on the same page, and then do some visioning about what you want to accomplish and how you're gonna do that. So good for you to have that lens of looking forward. So tonight, we're going to do a refresh on governance. It'll be a little bit different than what you saw already set governance. So although you would have had all the answers, Jenny, because you already did that, so. No, it's a refresh just on the importance of your governance role, the distinction of what that looks like. Because as the authors in the book I'm gonna share talk about governance is often confusing. Would you agree with that statement? People don't always understand what governance is. Okay, and then we're gonna do some visioning and forecasting on what are your upcoming big picture needs around facilities and programming? And it's an opportunity just to give the board time to vision. And what's beautiful about that is that as your governance level, you have a big picture view of the district, and that's where we're gonna keep that visioning at the governance level, big picture. So we'll talk about what that will look like, okay? But truly, this is your workshop. So if there's a time that we wanna say, hey, can we just go deeper here, please let me know. And if there's a time that I'm gonna put you in small groups and you go, can we just do those part whole group, just let me know. This is yours, okay? Any questions or comments? Okay. All right, so let's start with governance. And I'd like to start there, and I wanna showcase, I was sharing with Beth, I didn't really leave this look, I just put in a lot of post-it notes, I'm just kidding. This is called The Governance For School Board Superintendents and Schools Working Together, published a few years ago, not that long ago, by Davis Campbell and Michael Fulon. And Michael Fulon, some of you may know, is an expert in school improvement, what works inside the system, the policy drivers that work and the policy drivers that are damaging. And so really extensive and well-known, in fact, we had a convention a few years ago, fabulous mind. What he recognized when you look at school improvement, guess who's often left out of the leadership continuum when it comes to important stakeholders? Board members, guess who that is?
Or you are, absolutely.
And so he realized it was such an important discussion that he partnered with the retired Associate Executive Director of the California School Board Association, we're all about it. So this is where this information comes from, on page one and on page two. So I'm gonna just dig in, what, I love what the authors talk about governance as steering a ship. In fact, the word governance comes from the word superness, or the steer a ship. So if you think about your role as at the helm of this big ship of the, of the district organization, your organization's the big ship, you're at the helm, okay? Well, if you're at the helm steering, you're empowering your staff to row the boat. And we think that visual is really helpful because you all have distinct and connected, but distinct roles and responsibilities. And it's important to understand how you work together with synergy and leverage each of those roles together to be successful. Okay, so think of you as steering the ship, governance management is rowing your boat. So I'm gonna step back and just talk a little bit more about what the authors say. The authors recognize, and I love this, that first of all, that governance is often misunderstood. And would you agree that oftentimes people don't understand the role of board? What evidence do you have that well-intentioned members of the public, family, friends, don't really understand what you do at a board? What might be some evidence that you have of that?
Sometimes you get a lot of, I mean, people talk to you about day-to-day stuff, not that, I mean, it's the most important thing per se in their life at that point in time, and it's like, oh yeah, it's not. You know, it's hard to, but it's hard to say, hey, well, that's not my deal.
Yeah, why are, why did the lockers get taken out of the gym?
Right, you know, and so it's, all you can really do is pass it back to, you know, closer to the source, I guess, the chain of command type thing. I mean, you get all kinds of stuff, we all know that.
Yeah, and it's not a, it's not a, to criticize, it just, it just recognizes that governance is mysterious because most of us don't walk around in our daily lives or work lives at a policy level role. Some people do policy at work, not, not a very many, but when you think about your busy lives, we're doers. If you just think about the last 24 to 48 hours, the things that you have been doing in your lives at your jobs or you're the volunteer worker at home, you're pretty busy. Okay, maybe cleaning or running to the grocery store or burying kids somewhere or walking the dog or whatever it is. Can you think about some of the actions that you've done? Okay, well, you get on the board and all of a sudden, you aren't the doers anymore. And that's a real mind shift, a paradigm shift, and the authors talk about a governance mindset. It's a filter for how you approach work so that when you're operating, you're at that high level, steering the ship, district-wide questions and discussions because you're empowering your staff to be the doers. And that's a pretty big shift for a lot of people, for most board members, I would say. And even the most experienced board members say that's sometimes a shift to stay in because you get, there's lots of, lots of pull on wanting to know what's happening inside the system. So I think that's important to recognize. So we have a T-chart, some roles, some language from the book, but also from our own that we put down to help describe what does the role of the board often sound like? And what's the role of staff, superintendent staff look like? Knowing that we have a line here, please don't let that communicate a separation. There's a lot of collaboration here, okay? It's just an organizer. Probably we should put a dotted line, that probably would be better. But if you think about the role of the board as steering the ship, you're setting the what you wanna have accomplish that ends. So one of the most primary roles that you have is setting the direction of the district. As a board team, what are some key things that you do to set the direction of the district? There's, if you look down on the table, there's a clue. Your strategic plan? You're saying what you wanna have happen in the next, I don't know, three to five years? You're a portrait of a graduate. This is what we want for students, right? You're saying what you want to have accomplished, your mission, your goals, policy. You're setting district, the course for the district. That's one of the most important and impactful roles that you can play. And you have leveraged that, by the way, beautifully because this is right on your website, easy to find. I can tell you that's not always the case, honestly. So good for you. So the board leverages their role by setting the direction while you are empowering, you're setting the what? You're empowering the staff to figure out how they do it. So you're the what, they're the how. So let's look, take, let's unpack that a little bit. If you go down to thinking about policy and your policies drive a lot of the action that happens, staff implements it. Your strategy is long-term, where your staff is more the short-term, not that you don't do short-term decision-making, but typically more of a short-term actions, decisions, a stem. We like to talk about, and some of you, Kristy and Josh probably heard us talk about Laura, that you're on the balcony view. You can see the whole dance floor at the board view. You are the only group that has that. That certainly does that, but you're an employee. You are locally elected from the community. So your responsibility is to have that district-wide view. And if you're not at the helm with that view, if you are having discussions that are more maybe day-to-day, who's at the helm? And what opportunities are you missing to operate at that governance level? So if you're on the balcony view, staff is on the dance floor, doing the day-to-day, seeing, you know, the day-to-day work. We have some board teams that actually use those examples of language to kind of nudge themselves to say, hey, you know, this is a great discussion, but I think we're kinda getting on the dance floor. I think we need to get back up on the balcony. Just to help think about, okay, are we operating at a district-wide discussion right now? So you're at the 10,000 feet, staff is day-to-day.
Can I ask some questions, Bubba?
Yes, please do.
So where's Beth?
Where is Beth? Okay, let's talk about that.
Is she on the escalator, like going back and forth between the two?
Yeah. And we were just at a hotel, one of those revolving doors that were automatically, you know, last weekend in Minneapolis. And yeah, let's talk about that. Where, where is Beth's role in this? What do you think? I know I have my thoughts, but I'd love to hear yours.
I asked the question.
Yeah. I, I guess if I had to choose one or the other, I think she's on the, cool. She's the leader of the dance. Yep.
I don't dance that well.
But you definitely.
But I also consider her part of the board team. Absolutely.
So I feel like it's, it's on my day-to-day, like, you know, every day, it seems like I am on the dance floor. But I know that I can't stay there because it's more important for me to have that, that overview look so that everything is kind of, you know, moving along, but not really staying too long on the dance floor to try to kind of get back to. So I make sure everything is centered.
Yeah.
In a good place.
What are your thoughts, Jenny and Josh?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think I would agree with that. I think the thing is, to me, as looking at our role at this end, I think Dr. Johnson is the, the difference between us because she is not only the superintendent, but also from the education side. I'm not an educator, so she's able to move that to us to affect policy, strategy, long-term type stuff. You know, so I would say like, I think management, but I think it's, she goes back and forth just because we don't know, you know, and obviously she's kind of the bridge for us to, to affect those things that we're supposed to.
Absolutely. So she pivots and nurtures the learning needs of the board, right? To help you make decisions, but ultimately switches back and is responsible for the dance floor, even if she's not at all. That was a great question. I'm gonna write that one down.
Can I, Josh, I just appreciate that you said that when you said she's the bridge, because that's really the part I was thinking about, was that there's like disadvantages to being up there on the balcony, like sometimes, you know, for those of us as we start to age, maybe we can't see as well. And so we're going, what's going on down there? It looks really messy, like, and you know, and we're not there to necessarily know. And, you know, so who tells us? And I guess that's why I was wondering where, where she's at.
Yeah, you know, so what does it require to have, let's go there. I love that. So you look down and it looks messy and, you know, somebody will come up to you and ask you a question. Do you all have to know everything that's going on every day in all the schools? Not your role. But I, I've visited with some new board members, I've gotten calls with just recently, phone calls that, that are frustrated that they don't have the information and we're trying to help them understand, you don't have to. That's not your role. But it's hard to know what information I need. But in order to be able to have this relationship, what does it require to have empowered your superintendent and staff to do the day-to-day? What does that require so that you can govern well? Is that what you need?
I think that's, I think that's where my, not a struggle, but the empower the staff, if that's what we are doing or supposed to be doing, we have to have something to help us because I, I don't know which way, I think I know which way, the right way to steer the ship, but I need something from them that are the ones growing it to be like, why don't we go this way instead of this way? And, you know, I mean.
What do you need?
Cause I, you know, yeah.
We need information. Yeah, on what? What do you need information on?
Well, I think an example is when Beth did the survey of the teachers before we hired a director of student services, to be able to look at all the comments that the teachers made and kind of get down on the floor for a little while and see what's happening down there. Then she bungee ports back up every now.
I wanna see that. I hope you could have visualized that, that would be great, to see you on a bungee port. So you need data and information related to your goals and priorities, what the vision that you set, right? And so you need enough of that information flow and communication to have confidence that not only in the decisions that you have information that you need to make, but that the work's getting done. So it's three roles of the board, which isn't in your packet, but from it research, setting directions and expectations. You did that. You said this is what we want for our students, for our district to be successful. Providing support. What do you need from us to get there? So allocate your budget, calendar, time, stay in the course, it takes time to reach these goals, and accountability. You're monitoring progress. And that's done not with a hammer, but with a flashlight. How is it going? How do we know we're making progress? And what do you need from us? And I think that's what you're talking about. And when that's going well, you're operating at a level. But it takes time to continue to come back to what are the information needs? And that's what we're gonna dig into a little bit around your visioning around facilities and programming because you've got some big decisions you're gonna probably have to be making next years or something. It's a beautiful discussion. Can I just come back like every month and just sit with y'all and hear? Any other questions? Okay, so the last piece are goals and initiatives. So if the board sets high-level goals, you said in your strategic plan, we really are focusing at a board level on student success and supportive environments. This is your leverage right here. This plan on a page, in fact, I will tell you, I have shared your plan on a page with lots of districts and you will see beautiful examples where you have inspired them, that you can go back to the Atlantic plan on a page, honestly. So you've said, this is where we are focusing. This is the board's work right here. And this is what you're supporting and monitoring over time. When you turn the page, this is getting more into what the staff work is gonna look like, right? But you have your evidence of progress here, and this is your accountability, where you can have discussions throughout the year. How's it going? What do you need from us? But let's be, go back to this page for a minute and you look at this chart, it says goals and initiatives. So if you set the goal to say, we want to ensure that we have all students graduating with the portrait of a graduate traits, let's say. Whose job is it to figure out how that, how that's gonna happen? Does the board decide how that's gonna happen? That's the staff. They're the, you hire the professionals who have the skillset to say, this is what our students need. This is the kind of professional development our staff needs to have our kids reach that. So goals and initiatives. So board members won't be attending professional development. You could bring them staff here to give an example, right? You won't be picking out the materials or hiring the experts, but will you be hearing about it? Yes, at the board table. Does that make sense, the difference, big picture? Okay, how does this, would you just turn for a minute to a partner and talk about this language? Then how does this help? Just even put a frame around the difference between. Just talk with the partner. And I was like, four, four grade teachers, I'm gonna get up.
I know inherent state.
Yeah, and it's, and it's.
Sometimes it's something like.
I don't, it's, it's, I don't know, you just, you know, they're, they're all different, you know.
I mean, I'm like, well, if we look down. And you're looking at the dance floor.
Thanks for your thought. I was just trying. It is.
I don't know what it is.
We're working. Shouldn't be. You know, and that's.
I hit three under. Okay.
And I just, you know, so now it's a person, it really is just.
It shifts too.
Well, and the, the. An awesome.
If you talk. You know, I mean, eventually.
Yeah, cause you know, I think about using this analogy, but you know, I'm on the ball, but now I'm on the dance floor.
Chris, I do feel like, I mean, you have space.
Right, absolutely. It's, it's a fine line. But the, but the thing is, is. But the, but the thing is, is, you know, you can't, you can't be in the. And and so that's where, you know, if we're gonna empower them, they have to.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, anybody wanna share any highlights or from your discussion? That was the best killer. Okay, I'm gonna move on, cause we do have an ambitious agenda. On page one, um, I pulled some language out of the book that I wanna go a little bit deeper on. Um, and it comes from page fifteen and twenty, page twenty from Governance Core. So, and I gave you a highlighter, you can use it if you want, but I'd like you to read the three paragraphs on page one, and it just really talks a little bit, the author talked a little bit more deeply about governance and management. And then, um, we have a couple of questions I just want you to think about afterwards. So I'll just give you a minute to read those. Trustee is another word for board members in other states. Just a comment about the first page. I think that it's so important to recognize that you hire your administrators and staff because of their expertise. But what did they say about the role of the board? You have your own specific skills and abilities, and I don't think that that gets underscored enough. And that is governance. And so sometimes, you know, we continue just to strengthen that just as our leadership and our staff, their professional development continues to learn, also the board members, but please don't underestimate your governance role. So let's take a look at first question, and I'd like you just to jot down just some initial ideas individually. Why is it important that the board recognize and leverage your unique governance role? Why is that important? So just jot down some ideas. And then the second one is, um, we are doers, that's our busy people. And even the most experienced board members say it can be easy or challenging to operate that level all the time and not dip into the day to day work of staff, especially at the board table. What are some strategies that may help you operate with that governance mindset? When you approach boardwork discussion and questions at the board table. So if you just jot down a couple of ideas for each one, don't overthink it, and then we'll have a discussion.
Yeah, so wherever there's like a sound.
Okay, so we're gonna have you get up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tracking.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have you just, it's been a long day probably for you all already, just have you get into a couple of small groups. And just go stand somewhere and just share out each for each of the questions, just hear from one another. What, um, why do you think it's so important that you leverage your role? Why is the board important? And what difference do you make? And why is it so important that you leverage that to your ability? And then so spend some time on that and then share out, how do you, how do you, how do you help pay at that governance level? It's not easy. So so what are some strategies that you use? And then we'll just do a quick shout from each of the groups. Okay? So I'm gonna let you get into two small groups, you guys. And we see you can join if you. I'm gonna need each other.
And leverage our governance roles, I just. Set the expectation. To use her example of shining the light on. Yeah, I just think about that other son and that older talking about it. I was like, girls that I was telling them, we do it better. I think maybe they are. Or I'd say also, I'm a few kind of, or a quality or a, or a media only run, I'd say, I mean, our teachers, our, your, they're accountable to their, uh, they have a group of their students, their parents, you know, to come in and, and we are sort of, you know, such a much bigger group, but just, uh, our, you have professional unity and then we're learning in it and so, uh, in very personal ways, those students, they may look a lot of that similar, and I said, it's a bar, so we're all, I should follow this.
Creative animal she is.
Yes.
I, I think as well, I think. While I said, like, she's like, you know, on the top news. And it'll go down, but there are times where we didn't think to have. What can they have? You know, what can you want, what can change on? What discussion is happening down in there that we need to know about? So let's make, uh, decisions on the. Are you, and then you go to go.
I did, I actually know that very shortly.
Yeah.
Usually I put persons I speak for, we have different experiences that we bring to that, and other lands that we look at. Parents, you know, and that was, it's very, it's a big corporate teacher, whatever it is. So, and I don't think that's bad. When everybody has, you know, I, I, I like, I think it has to be. And so, and to be, and to always share that information, so we all have. I would say that's one of the things, the information base, which I think is what's nice about what, because if you're on that, it's meant to be a lot of survival stuff. And the data that comes to us, you know, necessarily is that, and, uh, down and I, I really had a survey or collective.
Probably every. But it's helpful to let them know that.
Mm-hmm. And I think that was. You often say wants to be part of another job, you know, it's everything's so.
It's going a long way in culture and, I guess, something they push her for all part of that. And I, I'm all that, I'm like, why is that? That's gonna be. They want that their.
You know.
I know.
It's kind of thing, I just, I'm not, you know, I'm gonna go order stuff, purpose and. Um, really, you go.
I was, uh, trying to look at it, it's, um, it's an individual part, I don't think, oh, it's. They put this for a journey, so we're kind of trying to get, you know, kind of that's the difference. Um, and, uh, so it's a core, and then it's like this. The other person's folder, there's been a strict folder, so it's the same algorithm, and then on our, it's. What they do and what they're.
Archetypal danger.
Yes.
So, um, all of them again, just a, they're, I mean, they're the same, but social.
No, you could.
Yeah, just, you know, what can I put? So, um, in terms of a strategy, I always, and I think more, I really believe. So I kind of look strange, like, what I know to do. And if my answer is not on me, I probably shouldn't be having this conversation with the person and try and direct it to, you know, that person.
And then when they say.
But sometimes it is things that are, they want to ask me. The calendar is gonna come out for next year, like, well, yeah, you know, that, I really soon, like, that's. But then, you know, I could say, well, you know. They, they put theirs on, oh, because they're like, she looks, it's done, and when they do. We could decide to change ours as a board, or we need that one, it's probably to go, you know, so.
But I will.
I have the information, I should share that, you know, because I kind of, at some point it was kind of a board, but it's also. If you're out in specific.
But yeah, I'd be able to, like, shuffle it off.
Kick your day off, well, that comes from the calendar.
I do care, but I don't care that stuff.
And so it's one of those.
So why, how you, but that's the word, but I just.
You know, he goes out, so. But no, it's out there, I mean, it's.
I did, you're right, I did myself.
Something you can, that's all that you can speak.
And I also said something, I'll.
Do I need to know that?
Like, as, you know, yeah, the word being goes, those are, and I might really, but most things, but that comes with. Yes, and I also. And it's another, yeah, maybe, but we're really not, yes. Having my husband worked through a lot of stuff, like, you know, it possibly wasn't sitting on there, have, and the, or we might not start, or state fair. And so I was always like, Joe, like, with the county, remember the years when I had to set a calendar that started when state fair was still there, and I, and I always voted for it, and I always like, so, you know, I don't agree with this, you know, personally, but I understand it's what's best for the district and. So that they.
Downstairs, you're going.
No, this is, right.
You think about.
It's just, it's guarding, yeah, all those things, yeah. You know, but you know, like, you're kind of saying, um, this strategy I was talking about is.
Yeah.
I think who I know that it's a combination. And if I put on, say, me.
Yeah.
Then I know it's really not something, I have the expertise to share, that, you know, there's probably something else that, you know, if I'm gonna go with this. I keep my, take more information on this.
Right.
You know, that would be the story, not people that, uh, are, yeah, are closest to the issue. Yeah, exactly. It's like a chain, it's a chain of events, right? But it's a different way to be proud, and so.
It's a good filter, though, I hadn't thought about that anymore. And there are a lot of, maybe, so bringing, maybe saying, we've already done this, we've already lived this.
We've already, it's our break of batch, and you know, we, yeah.
So all you can speak on is, here's what was brought to us, and what we recommended, that, I mean, that really kind of stops. So you're not saying, well, I.
And and really, what they all wanna know when they're asking about the calendar is, are we gonna spring? Exactly, yeah.
When school's guarding.
Yeah.
When we get off for Christmas, for Christmas, for.
It's probably because the calendar really does not. It's not a five very much every year, because you're not a, you're not a kid to, you know, like, you know.
Yes, there are a lot.
Trying to change it up, and then you realize you.
Yeah. Make it all, and you're.
Yeah.
Right, right. Really.
But then you do that, you're not allowing to, other spring break, you know, like, yeah, somebody is always.
All, yes. You're right, you guys see the big ones.
So I think, uh, you start with the, which is a great analogy, a lot of, some people always sit there in their corner, there, you know, and so it's a big thing for them. You're looking at, and you see, okay, that I have ever here, or somewhere. So you guys have to sometimes, like, okay, not that this is important. But this is what I'm seeing. And like she said, Beth probably is on the staircase, right? So she's going up and back, she is a part of this team. Other, as a reporter, it's a mandatory reporter, and we're going to see you all, but. Also not, I have issues with that. Your own.
You know, whatever, the good, anything about.
Or. Talking about, like, it's one of the people just want to cheer, she's like, that's all. And like, for, so the board is.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but they get you when he first. Oh, I'm so glad you're a worker, who can take care of this situation. Then you're like. I can be a part of a decision, I'm not new at about that.
And it, and it doesn't. To listen to people and, you know, those kind of things, but even, um, that are. You know. Yeah, and where they can express those views or those kind of things.
Yes. And there is a priority, but if they do go to teaching, so they're studying what they know. The nurses haven't started that building, and then they're, yeah, so they can, surely through those, I mean, they can find somebody that's.
Okay, let's have you wrap up your conversations.
Listen, Jesse, I'll not need to be able to find out with my heart. And then I'm actually always saying, if it doesn't, just, oh, maybe you can come back to me. Yeah, and very rarely do people come back to me, so I think, you know, it's just, but it's always.
Some people, people, uh, they want to go back to, people that wanna go over. Uh, they're gonna skip, they're gonna skip somebody.
I know, you're actually, you know, yes.
Okay, let's have y'all just put that together.
Some boards are more, that way they're not definite. Oh, yeah, so. The sessions can. Where you actually do know, like, what's, is, or, you know, whatever. Yeah, why they should.
Well, the old things.
I saw you looking, it's like, uh.
Yes, it's not, I mean, you can remember minutes long. If you didn't know, or I'm not. Not from the whole, it's basically. Then you can be, but I do know.
But the teachers. Oh, so the teachers are going to watch what? For their personal, well, it's kind of fun. They're different, I'm always respectful of them, they.
And that's what we get. What's, are you guys around the stuff?
You know, sometimes they have a hard time, you need to talk. Really good conversation, so who'd like to share just an insider too, from their conversation, thinking that somebody said in their group or. Just real quick, highlight from, what about the first question? What did you hear, big picture?
We just kind of said, uh, the link, we, we kind of are the link of the district to the community. Uh, kind of maybe the voice, uh, representative of the community and obviously put the student success as our. Ultimate. Right, yeah.
Right. And we're going to talk more about that, thank you. What about the other student? Thanks, Josh.
Chris, yours was good.
Yeah, we just, we kind of talked about being, um, the one that sets the expectations and, um, that we also have same issue as you did, the accountability to the community and stakeholders, so. Yeah. Yeah, does it, does it, do you think it helps sometimes to stop and reflect on how important your role really is? Sometimes I think, kind of the board meetings and where, you know, but it's like, stop and, okay, this is, it really matters. Really do, I don't think that's, I think it's also underappreciated with the occupancy as well. Thanks for sharing, what about, um, a couple strategies real quick? What do you do to help leverage your role and just to, to recognize that I'm operating that role? What are some strategies you use that your team talked about?
Like Jenny was talking about, because she's been a teacher and now she subs, that she's like very mindful about being available for people and like how they may perceive her and just trying to listen. And, uh, you know, and she's even tries to be strategic about kind of where she's located and how people, you know, whether they have access to her and how they think about it.
That was really good. Good for you, Jenny, cause that can be a challenge, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I have to make clear that. Board members can't. One board member can't do anything.
Right, right. Yeah, and you, as board members, you can try, you never think after board member, perhaps, don't care how can you try? Even as a parent going into parent conferences and saying, I'm here as a kindergarten parent, or I'm here as. Okay, yeah, yes, you are, but no, you still work. You're still my boss, 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 and so, and the change, right? So that's good, anything, what else, anything else?
See, I thought yours was good about.
I, I, you know, I just said that, like, if somebody comes to me with a concern or a question, I always, in the back of my mind, try and think, who would I go to for this information? You know, as they're asking, and if it's not me, then chances are I'm probably not the, the one that needs to have the answer to that. So, um, sometimes it is, it is things that I can answer because it is about policy or visioning or planning or what the board's, uh, goals are. You know, especially what we were doing, kind of facility type stuff and those things, but, uh, a lot of times it's somebody else. And that person that comes to mind, who I want to ask for more information is probably where I need to set up. All right, well, thank you, I hope this helps to, I did this, uh, intentionally to underscore, because you are going to now leverage your role in terms of vision. And I think it was important to set the stage that everybody understood that this is governance work now in action. And to recognize that with your superintendent, who also was part of your team and so is your, uh, SGO, or secretary. So I'm going to just set the stage for just a quick minute, and I'm going to have you three ladies just turn for a minute, where I'm just going to set the stage for the rest of the visioning session. And we're going to be thinking about this portion of the rest of our time together as a mindset for learning over time. And you've got some big picture decisions that you're going to be making according to what I was visiting with Beth and Christie to get ready for, uh, this workshop. You've got some big picture decisions coming up related to facilities that, right, over time, you've got some things that, and, and that's very common to districts. So you've got some basic, uh, big picture decisions related to facility, both probably short and long term. But one of the questions that's going to be facing you over time is, what are, what are the needs? What are your perceived needs, what are the needs that you maybe haven't uncovered yet? And how are you going to learn about those? How will the, how would the superintendent bring you that information? And what resources might you need or she need to be able to accomplish that? And then what are the options? I like that, I see, what are the options? And again, how are you going to learn about those options and the costs and what resources might be needed? And then we can talk the same about facilities. I'm sorry, uh, programming, which we're going to talk about too. You have opportunities to think, vision, being visionary is thinking, okay, let's recognize what some of our strengths that are now in programming. What do we want to be in five years? Where do we see our district headed? Okay, so you have the opportunity to think about programming. We're going to do some visioning tonight, not a roadmap, not answering the questions. But again, long term, what are the needs for programming? And what are your options? And how, over time, will the superintendent, will Beth, bring, bring information to you? Over time, so that you can make these big picture decisions. So we're just setting the stage for you to be thinking about that as a board, your big, it's a big picture decision making. It's going to require ongoing learning and you're going to have to help the superintendent and what your information needs are. And Beth will be working with you to understand, I'm bringing you information and the information I normally, or I need your help in making this decision. And so that's going to be important and fair enough over time. So really, let's just think about tonight as a mindset for learning, as we start to dip our toe in the water on conversation around what are our perceived needs? Programming and, um, facilities, and maybe where would we like to go, knowing that we don't have all the answers? Okay, so on page three, I pulled a couple of more quotes out of Dave's and Campbell, Davis, uh, Campbell and Michael Follin's book, because this sets the stage for what we're going to do. Uh, I put the title of the document, ensuring all students can and will learn, because the authors talk about the moral imperative. And when you really peel that back, the moral imperative, when they talk about a board and a superintendent having a moral imperative, what they're really saying is what you really mostly do you care about? Is ensuring all kids can and will learn. That you're going to raise the bar for all kids and closely achieving that. So when they talk about that moral imperative, that's what that means. So the first quote is, effective powerful governance occurs when the board is operating in unified, cohesive manner, with the unity of purpose driven by the moral imperative. That you all coalesce and come together, because when you turn off the light at night, you know you've made the best decisions possible based on. The belief that all students can. That is your common ground as a board team. Let's look at the second, um, quote, the starting place for developing unity of purpose is around a central moral imperative from which programs and policies for the district flow. So again, what you believe in, your strategic direction, your mission statement, your strategic plan, that's then where policies, programming, everything happens. So your moral imperative, I believe that you've already created is your school mission. You put your stake in the ground and said, this is why we exist. We have, we want to ensure every child's creative, innovative, and graduates to be able to thrive and challenge and acquire. I started. Right, that's your moral imperative. And so saying that, this is when. The team over here, you all talked about, you all come together, you represent different classes of the community, have different perspectives. You may not even have all beliefs and you may sometimes disagree, but when it comes down to it, this is what you will not back away from. Okay, up and down. So you've got your school mission and you've got your strategic priorities. And I think you put your stake in the ground that this is what you want to have happen over time. And Beth, do you think you could spend just a couple minutes talking and do an elevator speech about this front page, about what this speaks to? So then we can jump into, because this really sets us up for programming and facilities.
It, it, again, it's divided in two different areas, but both areas are very connected to, and to make sure all students, all students, uh, succeed. So we, we focus in on, well, how do we do that at an individual level, student level? So it's, it's really empowering everyone, even though it may not say everyone, so you're empowering teachers, students, and. There is, you're empowering everybody to make good decisions, um. On curriculum construction, and then we also put on their transition supports. As a school district, we understand what the transitions are. It could be from, um, class to class, so algebra one to algebra two, or it could be from grade hall, you know, kindergarten to first, or we move from building to building. Or how do we transition kids to be successful once they graduate? There's all the, all these changes that affect either, you know, a smooth progression, or it could be choppy. And we don't want to leave anybody behind, and that's kind of what the whole idea is, making sure all kids are moving at a steady pace forward, um, and being successful. And then we like the Trojan bride, and that kind of came from that portrait of a graduate. The portrait of a graduate, that document is really set up for senior high kids. So what we want the last four grades, um, for those students to focus in on, it's really, I mean, you could look at it and say, yeah, kindergarten students could do some of that. But we feel like a lot of those things are just not developing, developmentally, ready for any of that. So at each of the different buildings or the grade levels, they have those broken down to be more specific and geared towards that age level.
But all building towards that graduate. So as a fifth grade teacher, Jenny would have seen how she was contributing to that.
Yes. So you're saying that portrait of graduate and the portrait of a Trojan. Are two different. They, I think they're the same, as I get it, when I talk to the principals, because they've lived in it longer. Okay. But if you look at the middle school, their, uh, their attributes on expectations for behavior are a little bit different and less. Um, if, if you look at that, there's probably fifteen or twenty different, but at the middle school, it's less. Yeah. And they, they talk about it a little bit differently, like the pillars. Yeah, and that makes sense, I guess if I'm a middle schooler and I'm looking at portrait of a graduate, I think, I don't have to worry about that for a couple of years. Yes. Portrait of a Trojan, you have to worry about it now. Yeah, so it's this kind of channel, challenge, they're channeling up, kind of, uh, talking about, you know, what's, what's appropriate. Um, behavior or, uh, learning expectations, anything, and then by the time they're in senior high, then this portrait of a graduate is where we're going to see, you know. Uh, helping them get there. And then the supportive environment, it looks like it's a little lengthier, because it just has a lot of words on that side. But it's really, how do we support what's going on in the classroom and, and the quality of learning for all students? Uh, we want to make sure that they've got a safe environment, that they feel good about themselves and others, they treat each other well. And then you start looking at, thinking of the safety, even, you, you know, just in the last four to six months of all the stuff that's been going on, kind of very, you know, publicized. We're focusing on that safety of the buildings and classrooms and students all the time. We don't talk it every day, but we're always watching and making sure, you know, we can do a better job all the time. And then communicating it out, understanding the infrastructure that's inside the building and even out. And then as board members, it's probably one of your biggest responsibilities is just that stewardship. Money that's coming in, you're asking taxpayers to pay. Gosh, you're responsible for, some people paying a lot of taxes. And it's a heavy weight, I think, on board members, to make those decisions and, and vote. So, um, if you look at it in two different areas, even though it's very connected, it's all about student learning and we do, um, make sure all kids.
Does anybody have any questions for Beth or any comments? Okay, let's, I want to, we're going to start visioning on page five in your packet. And I just want to reference that when you start talking about supportive environments, you did a beautiful job describing the purpose. And the, um, what you want to accomplish that. If you look on page five and six and not go too deeply, I just wanted to reference that the parts that we're going to be talking about, when you think about. Your facilities as being part of your supportive environments, you can see those really fleshed out nicely on page six. So I just wanted to point out that under, as you were mentioning, that infrastructure updating and future planning and then stewardship, uh, resources. That's where your plan really gets at, um, talking about programming or spaces, making sure, uh, all students have school, classroom learning environment that meets their learning needs. So it's just helpful for you to know where that shows on the plan, and I don't know if you want to just take a quick look at that, but that's on the back page. Under, um, stewardship, that's where the detail is. Okay? So let's take a look at, um, page five, that I'm going to ask you now, um. You all have, um, perspectives and experiences with your district. And I'd like you to be thinking about, when you think about your facility needs now and into the future, just jot down individually. What are your, some of your initial impressions of your district's more emergent facility needs? And I only put, I put five there, you may not have five things, I just did that as a placeholder. And be thinking about why, this is a big I A S V thing, the why behind. So why is that any? What's the implication? And then when you're ready, go ahead and move to one of the three, two or three big wishes. That you would dream for your facilities over the next three to five years. That you would dream for your facilities over the next three to five years. And I ask you to get into two new groups and make yourselves up and have some conversation. And for the sake of time, I don't want to hurry you, but see where you can come to consensus. Like if you all identify something right away, I'm going to ask you to write it down on a C P L C to paper, each idea, okay? For each, for your items. So you're going to get the small groups and share, what do you see as your emergent needs? Or you seek consensus or agreement, write each need down on a separate piece of paper. And then share your aspirations, what are your dreams? And you can chart all of those if you want to, but if you have some things kicking. If you can comment, share each of those ideas as well. And then we're going to chart it out over here, okay? And talk about it. Each small group will share. So you guys can put your, I got the back here.
So let's, I have you, if you can grab this stuff, it's all in your.
You guys go ahead, I'm working on the.
And here's your materials right behind you.
That's good. So it's almost good. For, for, I just remember from time to time, most of our, with the increased classes. Or that.
The dudes.
Now then, also, yes, these, and for other practice spaces. And for.
Yeah.
No questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh my gosh.
For the different. Practices.
Yeah, yeah.
They're specialized.
I love it, love it, stay with that. Love it too. Oh, so much, because I'm not sure.
Did that, that point out pretty good. So then, then, so later, um. We learned, you know, roll, sound, sound, after, and then go in there and watch. Isn't that bad? And that's the big achievement.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. So I said that.
I mean, they were like that.
Yeah.
They're very. Especially with all of us. And that was special.
Sometimes. It is.
We're trying to hear that. You're very phenomenal.
Right. You want to have a chat.
I think, I think about like, not as teacher, like. That's right. That was big. So that's.
There's one person. And they. Yeah, now they're doing. So of course.
We could have sent the Asian. When you have. Right, that was half kids. And kids follow.
Just well, that's not our style. You know. I'm hearing. Well, I'm.
Here. I forget. Uh, it's. You know. The word of this week is, you see. And it's all. Yeah. So that's. That's true. But then we. Our turn, she had her balance all.
I don't know, many years, but I was.
Going back there about that. At that other grade level. And the state of. And our programs, like they were.
It's been a horrible time ever since ago.
So. Or it's my better one.
Yeah, well, yeah, the twenty one is just. Or four classes. I don't really thought that. I know what's. Well, now. And it was.
You weren't a sense.
For. Because I can tell. And then I can.
You're good. Absolutely.
That's awful. Many is obvious. You're learning the space. You're motivated, I don't care if they're moving. It's like very. Stayable. Prices, but here, here's your highest, working environment. It worries someone. Like you're how, like, well, what did you see? And even though just all of that's your house, I'll fall. That's what it goes. Some kind of life, it's just instead of walking around.
Kids are so tall. Like any of the other, your chairs, they're just like so uncomfortable. Like a little, a little chairs and stuff.
We're not, it's probably their girl, so I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, they're, both bones are like exhausted. And, you know, just the whole. Yes, how do we repurpose a space? And use our space as much as we can.
Yeah.
Well, by purpose. Like my life, me and this, there's a great example. I just think you have old stacks. People look like stacks of. Sure. Books. Yeah. Now we don't. So how can we reuse this thing? That's right. We're able to write in the building. I don't hope it's only one. Could be on. No. I also, the way I merely need this. That I, I said it actually, we do, we do, some, we don't. But people don't, ladies know that, that's the thing, that program, they have all these rooms here, they're all there doing, I think, it's a lot of the. Media special, specials, kind of, we don't really, it's called, or that, you know, teenagers that, you know, true. Where we have stuff on cards that check out to the classroom. I think you're. You're. Day to day laws. You know. Or in any high school. Or just when they, they. Or something. I mean, we'll be there, or does, or like. And we look at that. I've got. I hate everybody. Yeah. Do you have people? That was.
I think. I wouldn't hate that.
That's from six in the morning, they have practice.
You can.
I was gonna say, if not, I'm sure I'll find it. I will definitely. I will definitely. I think for that, I can see, I can see. Full building. You're very helpful.
We just don't know what is, you can, it's not that, it's like. I feel that we're supposed to. Yeah. What do you guys wish? I mean, just want to say my aspirations. And well, I have. We're doing that. Looking at, that's when you have fifteen year olds. In law. And then I also want all of the. County school. Or is that Miami growing, that's a much younger school. People are. And that. It's. Same thing. Some of the. Cause I was. Cause I know there's. So I'm here from the Bradshaw. I don't know, if you want to be. The one stage. They might buy a funding, they might rent a new school. About say. You know. They'll be families, which is. Say. That would regenerate. Normal relation. Yeah, and I think. I think a lot of people are afraid of. I mean, I know that's good, cause that. Same. But you're like. But now I'm really lost here. Now we value very programs, spaces. Yeah, yeah. And I think that's what we're looking for when we, we look at those companies. Yes, yes. For them to help us. For me, I don't see a lot of success. I just put in space, do you all just, for example, like.
You gotta show. No, I only know, I only guess it goes to that. My drink is, so you're not going to see me.
Thank you. So when you said one page, I mean, I can write just. Not just.
Yeah, I have got a line.
The line is a whole. Each I did, I know. God, oh my gosh.
It's like, we're gonna stick it up to people, too. Oh, you need right there.
Yes, right there. Right there.
So. Okay, I know, it's not being how.
So when you're ready, you're gonna write one. I guess. She's in the dark for someone.
What, okay. Can you just say that? No, I wouldn't make that. I, my face has been done, inspiring my spaces. With a, this one gets to be inspired, but really, like, I wanna learn and enjoy tonight. You know, I've never been discharged at a point, I, I was in school. I guess I'm. Yeah. And then I was. Coming with this. And so, which is also my favorite thing, but. That's true, you know, and so I was kind of like putting. Part of the math school. And I'm running based in my whole parry building. And I go, yes, I have a gorgeous. At school, I'm a music campus. No. My god, I've eaten school so much. I'm out of eating this. Yeah. I'm glad it's supposed to still be there. I'm glad it's. And I think that. Exactly. And. I swear. And. And what either. If I. Or whatever, you know, we all, whatever. You think that for three grades. Like, enough. Yeah, yeah. One answer is something, yeah. Yeah. So I said, what are the intentions? I get. I have very. I, I'm lucky, so I'll be a smudger. That's not ready. He looked at. And I know. They always had that. We should include class size. And classroom size. Yes, no?
Yeah.
Class slat?
Yes.
Well. I think. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, and I think that. I think we all have a, we live life. About evaluating and using the current space. Current space and, and our stack. That's our program, program we insert, then I go back there. And I'll study. I think we use it for ways. We go out there and we need supply. Does it mean such three or four years? But, um, it, it has. And. This one needs to be ordered. I've come. It'll be a free comment. Normally, probably not. Thirty one. See. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just. Saying that off with. That's a. For all. Like, it's so kind of into just learning environments in the classroom and. So get lost there. There we go. You know, there's. All that, maybe eighty. And so on and forth. They will get.
How many can we have?
They're not. They're next to here, and then they can put on the. Keeps a door. We never do. We didn't actually. So that we can. You have to lock it from the outside. That's. So then the key is on the outside, so you'll lock the door, and then you can have it open, but it shuts. All day long. That's that. I've been. They go the whole way. Unless. I've seen some pretty good. Got it in our doors, and it was like holding, not being approached. All the door. Yeah. Your building. Yeah.
That has been. Well, I mean, and this is. I mean, not. I'm not discerning.
When we talk about that, and we say, we know this, we're done, and they buy law enforcement, and this. Has. And. I have a. Yeah. Figured out from either ground till a breach. Kids in the building, look at the door. Shut. If it's nothing from six, seven, or eight. And from four to the end of the night. It is. Trying to build. We're all getting. And.
We have the building. Had the fire, we have all the big COVID, and then hit the fire, and then that, now we're silent.
It's pretty, pretty standard. That continues to build up. Gosh, for just. Yeah, that's very core. Yes, the cleanest stage was pushed out, and not just school corrects. How many areas been in the last. Pretty interesting. You know, my fault. And then I'm leaving it on the phone, and then it doesn't show up on your computer. But, but the thing, I think, sometimes. I'm like. Safe. That's. Yeah, it's, it's interesting, you read that twice. And we. I haven't even talked about parents. Last time. Still in it on. So they know what to do. Ask them what. Kind of get it. Directions. Yeah. Remember, so. Yeah. I. I think one of the best things we can do for safety is. Things you guys have been met in with. The day. Yeah. I have a whole lot of. I'll give it here first. I thought. Yeah. We, it really is. Yes. And that's how you're. Or we're in exposure.
I think. Yeah, I think. No, no, I. I love to share. I don't. That's why I'm. That's all.
For work. You got.
Yeah. Getting their name for.
What they do.
So, no one's allowed. Or all.
Oh, yeah. Continue that.
It's possible, no. Yes. And I think. Her needs. And all of this. No.
Yeah. That are.
Yes. Yeah.
How that is cool.
That's true. I'm thinking. That every. You're. Right. All right. You ready to hang down there? Okay. Okay. We got right over there. Um, facility needs and facility aspirations.
Oh, my.
Well, flapping on the.
They used to. For. Mark or who built them. As.
I have. I have. I have pretty sloppy. Very.
You're in the medical field, aren't you? Isn't that part of it?
It is. I think. That's why we don't get a writing description.
We do that too. But now, more than this, we have to sign a number five. So everybody knows.
So. An asshole.
I guess. Either.
Oh, I. That's. I don't see. We're gonna do it.
I think it's gonna.
Well. It's. We kind of need to do.
Don't. Should. This is. This is your. Thing. They'll be like, what? And.
No, look. That board members.
Cause we need to do it. That's all I looked at.
Will you pass your own?
Wow. Okay. You guys. Oh. We're nervous.
I do.
Hey, that's why we're nervous. We're gonna have a good discussion.
And it's.
I'm just. I'm coming. I'm. City.
There's one of them.
Well, the aspirations are separate. Okay. We kind of.
It's okay.
Yeah, we combined ours.
Yeah. It's okay. Cause that might be the same. We just related more of a.
Okay, so this is Laura. When you're ready, let's take you tomorrow over here. Now, this is your discussion. And I really wanna. Make use of this. Um, if we're thinking about what our facility needs are. What are the types of things that your? We were just talking about. And this is your conversation. Okay, so if you have reached discussion, let's just be important that over here. Um, and then we'll talk about. What you would like to see happen. But I think that might be melted in here. Also, if you talked about programming, let's just talk about that. Cause that was another thing that we wanted to vision tonight. So it might just be naturally organic coming out of the conversation. But if we have some times, I want to talk about what else we want to talk about. Program. So let's. Let's just have you start. What do you see as?
Did I ask you what you meant by classroom size and class size? So one is like the physical classroom in class sizes. Not our students. But if there were fewer kids, some of the classrooms would. Well, we don't have. Uh huh.
Be for classroom. We.
Yeah.
We add more sections, say a generator.
So you're saying this is something you would like to achieve as small as class size? By having more classrooms? I think. I think we're just looking for. Really.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you mean by homeschool programs? Just. So a couple of us have had conversations with the homeschool assistance program teachers. And they just keep on growing from here to nearby a lot. It ends up being an attractive program because. People who are homeschooling, which um has been increasing general and had a big bump after COVID. Um. That are looking for support. Can come. And get that. And. Really only once, all the way down, impressed them. They pressed it as a program. So we end up attracting people to open them all into our district. And just to use the homeschool.
Just a place.
Yeah. So right now, they're in the basement of the middle school. And they really like a lot of things about their space, but they are way over cramped. And it's actually leading to safety issues.
Do you? You have two instructors in there. And then like the last one, they wanted to go there. So they bring a bunch. You know, that's part of it. It's that. They're. Next. But that's. That's the best way for them to have everything in.
But they actually have to because they used to do more of one on one, but they have so many now. They have to improve. And then they don't have a separate space for them to do. One or a set of conversations. But.
That was a beautiful question. So let's just keep you rolling. Let's have the. New team. Let's talk about. Yeah.
We did physical building security. That's like actually like the doors and windows and cameras and the actual physical part of it.
I think. Too. That was right. You're on the side of it. So you both talked about that. Me. No.
Um. The assessment of the achievement center usage. Um, you know, the purpose of that when we bought it was to kind of expand into. Career tech, whatever that. Ended up being. And it's kind of, you know, we've had COVID, fire and all that stuff was kind of set us back. Now, obviously, we do use it, but. Maybe. Next generation education, career tech, that type of stuff. We need to figure out, well. Maybe what we're gonna do out there per se. And you know, we originally, as Chris said, we bought it. You know, to move the superintendent's office to the business. Business office there. We've done that. We've added the.
We've. The. We did a space for the.
The alternative school. We've got that there. Now we kind of, you know, the. Trades or whatever it is to go with that. Home school.
So. We skipped. For. So I, I was listening like, wow, if I was new on the board, I'd be really interested. Cause without that historical knowledge, you may not know that. That was the purpose. So that's. This is where we get into programming as well. Right? Is that something that you all want to, when we expand? Is that a need here? Um, you talked a little about some of the districts. The districts are partnering with their, you know, local community colleges. And this is something that districts are looking at. And those different pathways.
So and I would say we have a core community group that's put together to support that. So that infrastructure is there. And then we hired. That's second. That's for arts. Our fire. The. Building trades. Building trades person. Uh, so that we have two teachers here, but that's the purpose to do that. Program. We just need to make sure. It's.
But maybe we put too much on one sheet because that was also combining my concern about. Um, how are, is our technology up to date to train our students for the next generation workforce? And so I was thinking more about things like, where's our programming education? Are like, so really kind of assessing what. What our students need to be prepared to have good jobs. You know, when they leave here and how we use our spaces to achieve that.
They love aging buildings and refresh now, which is like a. Just. Any signs.
That ties into concerns about Washington.
Pride and love. Yeah, Washington just. I think our buildings aren't getting any younger, just that type of.
But I think if I can get. Just. I thought Laura had a great example. You know, she commented on sitting in this building every time they found for me. Those signs that say biography collections, paperback, those things that are up here that have been up there. We don't even know how old those are. But nobody.
Paper pack.
But you know, no one's taken those down. And you know, read. Fresh. Kind of like.
How.
Just kind of better understanding of, you know, I mean, we have some space problems. And then the other one was preschool.
Talk about that. What does that mean to you? You've got the early learning center and then you've got preschool, right? So what does preschool make the education to you? We have the early learning center. We also have a community partner, cats preschool. So the way I put it in my mind right now, we are responsible for four-year-old preschool and then you know our three-year-old IEP program. And so but we are responsible for all four-year-old preschool. So if something would happen with that community partner, that follow on us to have to that responsibility of bringing those kids into the district.
And what I said was that there's also this need because as preschool across the state expands, there's money available. There's also kind of pressure for us to sort of keep up with other districts and to have that preschool. And we're also, that need is not going away. It's actually Dan needs a, you know, that need for preschool is not going away.
And if if we ended up having all day, we're all in an all-day preschool, then we really, as Laura said, we don't have space to do that. And so that would be something that we wouldn't be able to do for our kids. So expansion means potentially serving more children and in more, we need space. So it's both.
And that's definitely problematic too, because that's really majorly about improving outcomes for our students too.
Questions you have for each other.
I'd be interested to know when you guys talk about gyms and athletic club, what was the conversation?
Lack of space for teams to practice and I kind of put it with the community, utilization, the wine stuff, how we don't have it. We can't use that space as much anymore. There's a bridge short and kind of hard to host some bigger tournaments and stuff. We don't get asked to post some things. Well, some schools are just being watched or set up.
Yeah, some schools have like two gyms at their high school. So I think that's where I think we're not, we added that we used to. We the middle school, obviously, that's something it sort of had in Washington, Schuler, kind of gym spaces. But we used to be able to use why have that front space, but they no longer have that back space and why that what's going on there. Anybody have something that's on their mind that's not up here that you can add your? Hey, you know, the one thing and I I miss the building, it's not a relevant, it's common areas. And that goes back to like Washington utilizing their bacteria. That just, but also the fact that our middle schoolers, it works. They go over Schuler and eat. But if we were to ever move grades or be flexible and might be finding the grades that don't work there. And so one thing is beautiful, the middle school does not have a common area for kids to gather or teach. That's a nice. Well, let's put a nine or ten up there because then we're dreaming. Would that be over here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be a dream.
I don't know how we.
Yeah, it's okay. It's just a problem. There's no right or left. What are you wondering about?
Sometimes I I I appreciate that the board is looking at particularness of the buildings and and programming. I look at, I go to spaces that are inspirational for learning.
Okay.
So if if we have schoolhouses and classrooms and spaces, spaces that inspire learning, I feel like more. When you put out.
Well, that's weird to talk about it, but I didn't see that. They check out flexible spaces. If I'm like, I want to teach at that building, you know, when you can have, do you want to capture something like that?
It's a, you know, I mean, it's it's how I move things. So when you walk into a classroom or school or, you know, you're visiting somewhere and all of a sudden you're just like, oh, I like this environment. Everybody is doing that kind of thing. It's motivating.
And what do you call that? How do you describe it? Let's let's come over here.
I think it was, you know, inspiration, learning time.
So are you saying like if my I have big collections may not give me the kind of star.
I know, I know, but it's an example, you know. It's it's fun. So the kids just painted this mural outside in the comments area this summer. And it's fun. It's because they have connections. It's a point of pride. We get what it needs. It's going to be made. And is that further than pride deal?
I've spent a few minutes now brainstorming around your programming. You started to go there. You talked about what your programming incurred potentially, knowing that you talked about CTE and growing that. Correct me if I'm wrong. The potential and then preschool expansion. Let's just do some whole group, whole group brainstorming on what is possible. And then you might want to make some statements here. What what might be on your mind or not? What you're wondering about?
So any kind of career, you know, as we're thinking beyond high school, what can we do to get kids kind of exposed? Have opportunity for just learning about a future career or college or vocation, whatever it is. How do we help them kind of get inspired to go that next level? Because junior college or, you know, medical school or whatever. How do we get them there so that they are motivated, inspired, involved? And it might be taking some classes or almost getting your your eleventh year to fifth year at the high school. Or whatever we can do to have them get a good start, a good jump start. And I don't know if any district in Iowa has a well-defined CTE program. The big kids get it and they know in junior high or middle school. Hey, here's what I think I want to do. Here's what I want to go. There's some things that are way ahead of us.
What do you know what they do differently?
I mean, council boards have gone into this really hard. And so they actually have a program that's, you know about council boards, which is like diploma plus one, I think. And so they want everybody by the time they graduate to get their high school diploma and also another certification. So they're mostly, and they have, they talk about in terms of pathways, they have multiple pathways that students can choose and they have sort of on-ramps and off-ramps. For, you know, if you sort of are like, what do you think? I'd like to be a nurse. And, you know, so you're getting prepped for that. And then you're like, well, you know, I don't think I really want to do that. I want to explore. I want to go to college or welding or, you know, whatever. Like there's places where you can change. And so they have the benefit of having a really tight relationship with Iowa Western because they're down. And so that enables them to do that. But there are ones that are talking about pathways. Did you talk to, when you went to Dan Hill, like I ended up talking to a school district and I have some materials from that. I can't remember what the district was where they have, oh, they're in, again, they're in like Pala or something where they have really strong employers that are, have money to invest and are very committed because they're growing their own workforce. And so they just have really strong pathways.
We've got great starts with some of our trades programs, you know, our building and trades, aviation. We've just not easy to start. We just can't let them just fade off because there is a good start. We're staying here with it. And then all of a sudden, you know, groups of kids graduate and it's like, what happened to our aviation program? We didn't continue to grow.
I think our agricultural program is amazing. Yeah, well, I never, I I I never imagined that there were high schools that had that much preparation for students. Great. I would love to see us assessing, are we really, are they really prepared for the careers that are out there? Or other things we need to do to improve that? And is this what our students want to do? Like, is this what can we look for? Is this what those students want?
You know, but I was reading some advice about making opportunities.
Other things, you know, that high school level. Just thinking about even at elementary level, junior high level or K A level, you know, kids that have have a, or maybe advanced beyond like third grade. How are we challenging them? How are we inspiring them? And how do we make it happen? So maybe a third grader might be in fourth grade math.
I think that's really good because we have, we have changed our process for that. Because we have several buildings, we don't necessarily have that connectivity where it's really easy. It's easier with Schuler and the middle school that we can maybe make some of that happen. But I know, I I I can't speak because it's not entirely sure that we used, I know we used applicants from the middle school coming up to the high school to take the course for. And that becomes a challenge and I'm not sure how much of that happens in how many subjects, you know, it's really easy to nap, but we had kids that were doing it in for their English courses, taking some science courses, spending a lot of time up here, but.
I remember hearing about it.
I asked principals, are we doing this? And why aren't we doing this?
Mine did. And I think mine that is graduating is the last one that did it for whatever reason.
So the principals, it's the ones that have been here, you know, enough, they just said, we ran out of staff. And so the scheduling is really tight. Because it's, you don't have, you know, people that, you know, that we can say, oh, I'm just going to use elementary, you know, three third graders who went to the fourth grade math. Now you, you know, woven up the fourth grade classroom. Is this a change woven? And then, you know, how do we get fifth graders to, well, how do we get third graders to Schuler, to fourth grade math, fifth grade math? You've got this to be, you know, two grades. It's it's just thinking about how can we accommodate those learning agents.
And is that what I speak to some of it? I think was a little thought will change too. That was, no, we're going to keep them here and we're going to, we're going to differentiate in the classroom. And, you know, that's that. But then again, that's a, you know, getting up at the upper level, that that really happened.
I mean, and even beyond that, we want to look at it broader and just, you know, our sort of our tax support across the board. I don't really very much. And now we're losing the quarter type teacher.
I don't know about that, you know, it's 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 possibly there. And again, tax is an enrichment. We're talking about giving opportunities for kids at that higher level. You know, a learning environment that they're thriving. It's easy for them. Where do we challenge them? And so they're appropriately placed at an instructional learning level.
You can, or remember, I'm not sure what all CTE programs we actually offer or have. That's a question we have. We're, I don't know what we often.
It would be good for us to have an update from my life to actually taking place.
It'd be curious to see what the current high school students are looking for career pathways and to see if match up with what young kids are looking to for even future careers. I'm not sure. Don't know.
So they don't go over our welding tradition. I've had one recently.
I missed out on it, but.
I mean, that part we were headed. Questions that you have that certainly aren't going to be answered tonight, but that you're wondering about, I was hoping for you to hear. All getting your for best to know. Want to share one that, that Chris, you shared, you have a high open enrollment. What does that mean? Because I have to talk about the financing, top four grade, fifth grade. You have a high open enrollment in, right? So at a hundred and fifty six years, times seven thousand six hundred, that's one point two million dollars. Now that's offset by some opening loud, I think. I sounded really smart. That was not low. But you have a high open enrollment for you. It wasn't funny for you if you're looking at something that your financial may just be a bit more comfy with.
Are most of the kids that are coming in to the community in high school, are we giving them numbers?
And I don't know, you know, when I put a classroom space with that flexibility, and I'm going to redate myself. Years ago, we had partially shared blocks a moment. And so we had sixty students that came over in the afternoon or midday during the day that really filled up our classroom. So I don't know that we're in a position or have anything, but you know, that it's that unknown of being prepared in the future. What if somebody said, hey, we'd love to share. We accommodate that functional spaces, though, you said. That could we accommodate functional spaces that you're referring, or could we accommodate an influx of students if we were to try a sharing type? I mean, and that's way it's future, but.
I don't know where even lack of teachers or programs offered, or what was
the way that at the time, there were incentives to share with students. And so it was kind of like a tiny scale for five years. So by partially sharing with us, say, sure, that's also provided incentives to that district to do that. We also got that. It kind of went by the wayside because once what the, each year you may receive less than a student per year. And so once they got to where it was not financially attractive to them, that's the thing I need to do. So what are you wondering about in terms of this step? Do you have great conversations, right? Then you have, I mean.
I think I do things where I would want to also hear from my staff, but there's things that they know that we are not seeing, because that here, those who are living in those key day to day. And I'd be kind of interested to know about community needs. And for me, that's one of the reasons why Jim makes it on there because we know that community is, that's one of the things that they really do respond to and kind of order.
Well, this is just dipping your toe in the water of just what's on your mind, right? You know, if you're going to actually move towards you're going to have to probably step in facility. What are your thoughts about?
I think it's important to have, talk about our, our staff. Some of these things easily, but we can have a discussion and think those, some of those questions could be answered by our staff as to what, or we talk about expansion. Mr. Miller probably has ideas of what he would like to do or whatever. Well, we might be able to do that, but we can't do that if we don't. You know, or whether it's, you know, Mr. Johnson or whoever it is or tech or, you know, so I think some of that stuff that we, you know, but that's part of our, you know, that's part of our working with our staff or these people.
Isn't that class? I don't know whether districts do this, but maybe there's kind of those community needs assessment, takes that to allow. But, you know, we have some theme area. It would be ninety-one areas from the theme areas here. I would be interested to know if this, if any district has sent those out to staff, to community to say, ask those open-ended questions. What do you think about our current protect offers? I'd like to see what do you think about our aging goods? What do you think about?
Oh, we're cheap.
I prioritize. How do you prioritize these needs? What do you, what do you think about classroom space?
Because whatever is, is that like a great area?
Just to get ideas. Need, your desire, but if you're thinking about what you know about your facilities, what do you not know? That's what I'm saying. What do you not know in terms of a professional coming in and looking to say, okay, you think you're you think your big need is your elementary because it was packed, but actually your middle school boiler is about to go under and your roof needs to prepare. And so then you didn't know that. So I think you need to really think about, really about investing in an assessment so that that assessment that does get input from staff and community. And then you can have prioritize what you want to accomplish. It's been since two thousand seven, the last night. And I'm just putting myself out on the land saying that's what it just works to me because otherwise you're sort of at a, you know, still. Now, programming, yes, there's things that you can definitely do. But if you need building space to accommodate that, you know what I mean? There's some things you can do, like with your, if you already have the building for your CTE and it's within there, then yes. But if preschool is your dream, you need to know what's possible. So what are you, what are you thinking about testing? And then I talked a little bit with my finance team about that with your enrollment rate, you have a bond. That's not my area of interest, you see. But, you know, typically the first will get that investment, that sentiment and then bring in their financial advisor, newspaper capery or something like that. To talk about, look at your, all your expenses to say, how do you think about the bond? Probably puts you in a good spot. What are your thoughts? I'm fine with it. I feel like that's due diligence to community. We have very, we have very clear needs to articulate. I'm not sure. I don't know. Not sure what they're, I don't know how to build that.
You mean just get a facility assessment?
No, in terms of a bond to go around the bond. No, the facility is nothing. I'm fine with that.
I mean, I think.
How do we transition?
I think the first step could be this assessment before we can really do anything else. I feel that's kind of what we've been heading towards. We just haven't, you know.
That might give you the talking points to be able to say, I got this, oh, sorry. We want to be the the school of choice in the end. We want to have less learning, inspiring. You know what I mean? That might come from Christine, but you are representing your community. We have those goals. But that might give you the implication.
What are the rest of the thoughts? Because I question, so I think, you know, the board is aware that we've got four different buildings plus the ELC plus the achievement center. So we six buildings, right? One's kind of small, the learning, the preschool is pretty small. But we've got quite a bit of space. We just don't know if our space is appropriately being used. And what programs such as, you know, the CTE, you know, are there things out there that we could be doing? We reevaluate space for those needs. If they, we just don't know.
I think that's what professionals are talking to you.
I mean, that's what they're looking for is more, what are we doing currently that we could relocate? Or, you know, add into it, support it, grow it, whatever it could be.
Right. I saw one facility plan that was the district north, in north, central part of the state. They had some, they didn't have a big boy in pressure that are classroom or school. I mean, it was, they needed to close the school, but they didn't know if the community was going to support. So they brought two or three different ideas on what they could look like, how much it's going to cost. But they hear from the first of what you want to have happen. So I think that's probably going to be your next step, is getting more information than than the bond might not be right away. And there might be some that you can't tackle. Church or with a hole or save for myself's part. I don't even know any of that. I'm kidding.
But now it's time for your board meeting. I hope this has been helpful to start to uncover and get you on the same page, at least some of understanding what some needs are on your space and programming. To go to, to, can I ask you to go around the room? You would have to answer to.
I think it was a good conversation. I think it shows that we're all not on the same page, but we're all, I mean, we all have the same general, like Christie said, I think we all have some, there's some common themes that we're all.
I'd be curious if the staff did the same exercise. How many things would share? I think I was, it was, yeah. Like, that's what I was going to say a little bit with the questions that I was asking has to do with from our balcony view, are there things that the people in the games were saying that we're not seeing and do they see it the same way we do? I think that's a little bit of a frustration because, you know, we know that money will tide openly limited. And so we're not going to be able to do everything. And so I can't achieve all my dreams. So having clarity and a common agreement on what's most important is, you know, helpful.
I can, you know, back up what everybody's been saying. It's interesting, you know, when you get it down to your sheets of paper, it's pretty, pretty awareness, you know, what the district needs are. Big victory.
I think we've flushed out how I really, these reflections out of it. And I think I'm most intrigued by sort of that idea of just the inspirational learning basis of just having our, our building be places that both our students and our staff want to be. So how will we, how will we fall for her?
You can add, well, you also have been earlier to another conversation. So then I'm just thinking this conversation. Oh, you're making me think a few hours.
I know.
So reading some of your information was, was nice. I think you have to find some type of unity and cohesiveness that you are the driving force between the future of what Atlantic School District looks like. Whether that's facilities, programming, just use of funds, your community outreach. And I think you have to determine, we can't be all things to all people. So who are we? Who are we in Atlantic? Who is our future? Is that CTE? If that's our strength, then we go that direction. If that's maybe something we need to work on and we partner with other schools to find someone else that does it well. And we model after that. We figure out who we are. And I think that does start with an assessment of our facilities. So that we even know what we can do. If we don't know how kind of space we have, we can't add another CTE program because we don't even know where we would put them. So we need that overview of the facilities and a master plan. And then we take it before your staff and your community and you say, this is who we are. And people will come because you are taking a stand for who you are. You're not just, well, I, I think we're going to be good at this. And I think this board is very unified and is very purpose-driven. And so I see nothing but good things from this moment and this talk and where the future goes.
Nice to hear that. Well, thank you so much for having me. This has been really fun to get to get ready for, but also just to experience. So I appreciate you part of your journey. It's just really any of your first season, so please stay in touch and how we can support you. Then I do have a feedback form and the only piece that I'm going to ask you to fill out, because I know you have a board meeting, is at the very bottom, this is going forward, what would like to happen? I'm going to type that up, give that back to you, that you will recommend to me. But then I'll type all this stuff back to you. And then there are. Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing you and meeting you. My cell phone's on the. What do you think you have or is it having helped me? So you want that, as to fill that evaluation now, is that what I'm hearing? So yeah, one pager. You don't have to fill out anything else. You can if you want to, but going forward is really the piece that I give you that, or if I have any, any comments about what you'd like to learn more on, you know, something.
Give you that or if I have any, any comments about what you'd like to learn more on. We need something. Did you not just want?
Yeah, it's a single.
You have another sheet.
Sorry.
I don't think you might not have gotten it.
Okay, I only get it to have the routine. That's good.
You just wanted us to answer the last one, right?
Yeah, if you have a little insight that you want to share.
Total achievement.
Um, I'm what you have, I'm what created, happy to be done as much as you. Thank you.
Oh, yes, yes, right there.
That's my friend.
Next one, everyone.
Any of you have more questions about the annual board awards? Uh, we are all really close, just so you can ask, we can tell. Can we learn that some of your colleagues? But they want to know your points. Do you think him have you or I can tell you? That means your team will be recognized that are second, basically. Our annual convention, the second annual session will be asked to. Get activated and you'll get a press release and pictures they put out, get your paper and so it's a model for your school.
Yeah.
They didn't get it on stage.
Yeah. Anyone need a break before we do? Break.
We're getting this about five minutes.
Everybody completed there?
I'm watching like eleven thirty. But you're fine when you let people.
Right.
Next time.
I've had like.
Everyone gathered formed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Beth is visiting, so we were going to move on to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Superintendent report.
All right, we kind of need her for that.
Yeah. Does anybody have anything to report about the board's report? That is not a mere. Lisa, you ready to go on financial report? She will go there. Okay, I'll let you do that.
Yeah. So, uh. How could it that I sent you just a link of all the things that are happening in February? Uh, we're about eight months into having this budget completed, so we're really four months left, March through June. So now is when we're really doing, uh, some reestimates of current year. Where we're spending the money, what else needs purchased, what else is happening? Um, so there's some really good stuff there. The numbers look good. Of course, I always want more revenue. So, you know, I'm always. Pushing to make sure that, you know, we've. Uh, build all the schools that need to for open enrollment purposes, make sure there's nothing out there that we have missed or reimbursable. We haven't claimed, uh, making sure all of our athletics and activities that turn their money in on a regular basis so that we're seeing those, uh, revenues generated. So I think everything looks good. Always want more revenue, so. Uh, always seeking that out. But as far as our February financials, I, I didn't see anything that was unusual enough that I thought it needed to be brought to your attention.
Fair motion to approve the financial report. Someone? Decided.
Okay, Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Christie Powell? Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Gordon?
Yes.
Laura McClellan?
Yes.
At this time, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Two of the things that I included on my report was just a quick, uh, summary of that PLC summit that all the listeners figured and myself went to. It was awesome. I don't know if we really got to spend much time at the last work session. To tell the board it was inspirational and motivational. It also got us all on the same page of learning. What we could be doing, should be doing, will be doing for PLC teaming. And really, it's, it's the modern way to, to work in a school system. It's collaborating, it's communicating, it's working together. And that's what we hear from staff quite often. We don't have time to do things and we don't communicate well. And maybe what they're saying on the communication part is. We don't get to talk and work with each other as much as we can. So it's learning how to kind of set it up so teachers can get together and really work. To, you know, collaborate. And then even improve instruction and learning and in any kind of, uh, program that they're teaching. We're learning how to set that up. More information will come even as a board member. Um, I'm going to get information you guys on. So now what is a board member? What's expectations of a board member? You know, and it's that kind of that, that ten thousand view, ten thousand foot view. On PLC and TV and so on. And then what does it look like as I move forward? What are we going to be doing? Either the summer training, you know, our kickoff work days in the fall, any of that stuff. We're going to try to strategically kind of set it up. For this upcoming year. And then what does it look like? At least in the next two years. We can't predict after that. Because things are going to shift and change and we're going to like some things and really kind of focus in on that stuff. Um, so we could probably put something together like a two-year kind of outlook on what we think it's going to look like. And what that does is because the information to award, but it really lets the staff know, hey, we're not going to make everybody do. A lot of stuff this first year. It's all progression. We're going to work at it and get better in the end where things end. It's not going to be all done. That first year because it's impossible. There's a lot of stuff that goes on. Uh, when you team. And each year you get better and better at it. Um, we look forward to working together with, you know, your, your colleagues during that, that work session. That hopefully we can set up either daily or weekly. So there's that. Um. We have advertised for the two media specialist positions, the two librarians, struggling with getting, um. Candidates. And so we started looking at how can we creatively kind of take care of the two positions? And we looked at, well, you know, one of the, um, the, uh, media specialist teaches a lot of technology stuff and they almost share it. So we said, you know, what if we had a K-12, uh, media specialist to take care of all four buildings to oversee, making sure. That things are done correctly in the buildings. It's not like it used to be 20 years ago, you know, where there's a lot of checking out of books and just, uh, lots of stuff that went on. Um, as it was before. Now it's more overseeing, you know, checking out books or references in the libraries. And then, so we looked at, what if we did a K-12, I already said this, but a K-12 media specialist. And then look at a very specialized K-8 computer technology. Uh, your science person that really gets into some specific well-trained. Technology stuff. It could be robotics, it could be computer, it could be anything. At the K-8 level and really get those kids. You know, using their, their tools. More so that by the time they get at least to junior high, they're doing a lot of Google classroom and anything connected to that. So they're, they're using their devices. Um, and the teachers like in math are teaching. How to get in on a computer program or Google classroom. So we're looking at that. Um. Skipping into then director of student services. We've had an, uh, advertisement out for a week. We've got five applicants in so far that have applied for the position. Oh, so that's pretty good. And just within a week's time. So that's very promising. We'll probably give it another week or two. And then, um, do it some interviews.
Do we have a, not to interrupt, sorry. Do we have a grounds person? Do we know yet? Cause the grass is turning green.
Yeah, we talked about that even today. We've been kind of emailing back and forth between Lisa and Russell and myself and I can't hear anybody else. He's interviewed a few people.
Okay.
Where we're at right now is figuring out the salary. So we're, we're close. I'm looking at Lisa. Is that about where we're at?
We had two people apply. We interviewed both of them. Um, they made an offer, uh, salary was given. They declined due to salary purposes. Physician was offered to other person. They declined because of salary purposes. So at this time, we do not have anyone.
So we're working on just kind of what would be an appropriate salary, you know, to come back. Cause we, we do know that our, our, um. Our groundskeeper salary. Is probably less than it needs to be. Um, even for next year. Again, we're waiting on the governor and we're in the legislature, right? It's not just the governor. Yeah. We're just kind of in that hovering mode. Almost in, we're frozen in time on what do we do for salaries for next year? Cause we know that. Fifteen dollar minimum salary for non-certified. That would. Kind of catch wherever that. Uh, groundskeeper is at, plus you probably put some years of experience, which grows, you know, that, that way is one in just fifteen. So, so we're just kind of being frozen mode. We want to get somebody hired. We're kind of waiting to, what do we, what, what can we sustain? As a district for salaries. Um, the, the, the safety team met a couple of weeks ago, um. Second time meeting, we're, we're starting to get kind of separated into last meeting. It was a long one. We talked about just practices and procedures on how and what we do in the buildings with like law. Um, and, um, any kind of emergency people and what they need to know from us and what we needed to know from them. So we have a better idea. We learned that we really have to have. Uh. You know, a reunification plan in place. We think we've got some good safety practices. I'll just say like a fire drill. We've done those for years. Kids know how to get out of the building. They know where to stand, tornado drills. You know, even, um, um. Intruder drills. We, we know what to do, but when we actually leave the building, we know where to go. But we don't really have a plan on how to get parents reunified with their kids. So we're going to work on that. That's something that we identified that's kind of our priority. The SAI conference, I went to, uh, one, um, and it was on, uh, communication and working with the community. On just building that confidence of the district in, Lou was part of my sessions. It was really, really good. And again, it's learning how to get information out to community in a tiny manner, um, helping board members. On knowing what to say to community members, like you're shopping in the grocery store and somebody says, yeah, I just heard of something crazy went on at school. What do you know about it? Like? Well, how do you react to the board member? You know, because you don't want to look like you're, you know, like you're not being on top of stuff. Well, most of the time board members, they aren't totally informed on stuff that goes on in school on a daily matter. So it's just, i- i- it was good. And, and so I've got some stuff that, um. Oh, yeah, I'll kind of be ready to, to share that out with the board and maybe whether that a work session, because it was pretty good. And it doesn't take.
That'd be great. Yeah.
And then the last thing I have, I sent out a letter, a short little note. And again, you know, the way I write, I don't like to make it lengthy because I'm afraid people will read it. You know, because they got stuff going on, you know, I'll read it and I'll pick it up later. It might be somebody that thinks. So I sent a letter out today and I think it went on social media and then it went in our newsletter. And it really kind of lets parents know that we're not going to send a parent message out every time there's something that kind of. Involves student behavior at school. Um, that some people may say that's a threat and we deemed it to be a threat. It's something that we handled and we're not really going to share out everything. But we will share out stuff. That we know had that potential to be a threat. And then we call in law enforcement and they decide it's, it's a threat or it's not a threat, you know, that kind of thing. So I want parents to know that we're not going to put out. Messages all the time on. Things that go on in school because there is confidentiality with kids who pay and listen.
So is that a change from our current practice?
No, it's what we do. It's just, there's, there is a few things that bubbled up in, in the high school. This week and it's like, gosh, do we get a message out to families? Do we or don't we? And I said, you know what? We can't address every single thing that goes on in the buildings. Let's just make sure that ones that were. Had that potential to be a threat, where a threat was made. To a student or staff member, then we, we think that's very, very important that we have law involved in, um, that's what we'll let families know. I mean, did I answer your question, Laura?
Yes, thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Anything anybody wants to pull out? The steps further.
I guess my only thing was that the last meeting, um, I had asked, um. Dr. Johnson, if we could have a little bit of a. How's hiring looking? How's staffing looking for next year? Are we? So I don't know if you want to get an offer to bring them to us next time or if you have a.
Well.
On that right now.
I have got something here. I don't know if it's going to help or not. Um. Diane, uh.
I just need the overpiece.
You know, we're, we're, we're close. I mean, when somebody turns in a resignation, we, we advertise it right away. Um. Our turnaround has been pretty good. And again, we're just right in the middle of March where you're just starting to see like teacher resignations, non-certified, uh. Or failing them in with really good candidates. So that makes me happy that we're finding people that. The principals who are doing the interview and they're inspired, they're excited about these new people coming on. They're really excited. So I mean, that motivates me to know we're, we're hiring some good people.
Do you know what our application rate is like?
Um. I would say, you know, and it depends. Let's just say, you know, like the math position that, um, that I think, uh, Mrs. McCain was just interviewing for a couple. Uh, at the elementary level, there might be ten, fifteen. Not a lot, right?
Better than that has been some years. Yeah.
Other than the grounds we've heard about and the, the median specialist positions that we talked about earlier. Is there any areas you're having trouble finding?
At this point, I'm going to say no. We, well, ELL is right because I have is, is moving on somewhere else.
We, we haven't had an app on that one yet. Um, a couple of spread positions. Uh, we had some people that wanted to internally move to a different position. Um, we're, we're just kind of waiting to see, you know, what, what do we do? Um, because you have to have that certification.
Is, is that something that, and maybe we've already approached, but in the. Way back when we had that in first need for ELL. We did sort of go to somebody if we, you know, encouraged somebody to get certified to be, if that's something we could do if we had staff interested in pursuing that certification.
That's, that's a good idea. Um, the AEA offered some kind of ELL support that they just kind of either. That's that's a good idea, um the A E A offered some kind of E L L support that they just kind of either. Share the information with us, I don't know, they just said, you know, next year we we may be looking at being able to offer services, are you interested? And of course, I replied back, yes. Our population continues to grow, we could take all the support that is out there. It's just a hard position to fill, our two E L L teachers are overwhelmed, I mean, they're just overwhelmed.
Yeah, and we want to be respectful and not burn them out, for sure.
Yes. So sped, E L L, those are two areas that we're we're going to struggle. And it's funny, so I got an email the other day from a school district and said, hey, would you consider taking a level three student, and I went. I don't know, okay, let me ask the building principals, do we have space for a level three student? Thinking I knew the answer and I went, no, you know, we're crowded as it is, we're not going to take any other districts' level three kids, because we're. We're full as it is, right?
Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda?
I would move into the consent agenda.
Christie Pellet?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
And we'll move on, we have our discussion item, which is the twenty four, twenty five budget review.
Now, I did say, because this has been a longer meeting, that I would make this short and sweet. But I also know I like this stuff, so if I look like I'm still talking and you're like, stop. Just somebody give me the sign of the to uh to stop, but you'll do great.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, this is a packet, again. A lot of this is overview, I've I've highlighted a couple of numbers that I want to share with you and what it means. Especially because as you're out in the public, in the community, there's always someone who says, what's the property tax going to be next year from the school district? What what's our part? And so I always want you to have that information available and the why. So. First thing we're going to look at. Is when the aid and levy is the process by which a school district sets up the budget. The aid is the student aid that we receive from the state. We get a certain amount per student that attends here. That is fifty five percent of our budget. Comes from the money we receive due to enrollment, so enrollment is our biggest factor when it comes to how much money are you going to work with? Whatever our count was on October one of last year determines our budget for the next year. So you have someone move in October second. They are accounted on that date, someone moves in September thirtieth, October first, they are counted. Then each person, depending on their role, has awaited enrollment enrollment as well. So if they require an I E P or if they are homeschool, so we get also different amounts. So when someone asks you, what's your certified enrollment? They might be asking how many people actually attend your district? That's not what certified enrollment means, certified enrollment means how many students live in your district that you receive funds from. So that's the number that. The state looks at and says, this is how much money you're going to get based on your certified enrollment, those that live in within your school district. Then we have what we call butts and seats, or the number of students that actually attend here. Because we might be having other schools send us money or sending us their portion of state aid. Because they have a student that lives in their district but attends here. So that's a separate number and it's important to know kind of the difference, because you could have a certified enrollment of fourteen. Which is what ours is fourteen, fourteen, but you might have a different number for actual butts and seats, that might be fifteen hundred kids. And so when you're looking at your population of, do we need to expand our buildings, you also have to take into consideration other students that might attend school here. So fifty five percent of our monies come from this student. Aid, students' numbers that attend here, thirty percent of our money comes from property taxes. Of people that are in the community that live here. Now, along with property tax, as you know, there's lots of pieces, there might be rural roads, there might be the hospital, there's lots of different people that make up that property tax rate. So ours is just a piece of it. So last year, your rate was thirteen dollars for a thousand dollars of property valuation. So and then that's broken into different pots of money that that supports. So that first page that you look at, I highlighted, so last year it was thirteen dollars for the thousand. That generated that six point six nine seven million dollars is what that generated. So this year, we have to do an additional public hearing, because this statement that you see here will be going out to all of the community. On March twentieth, the county auditor will be sending this out. Now, as you'll notice at the top, I don't have any information about what, when and where this public hearing is, because we'll be voting on that later tonight. To make that determination, then this will get sent to the county auditor tomorrow. As well as go to the newspaper and they have assured me that it will go in Saturday's edition, so that we meet our deadlines for the number of days we have to have it posted. What, when I look at budgets, what I would recommend um to you, there's not a lot of factors we have control over. You have a bond already set, so we already know how much money from it we need and it's property tax. And so there's a lot of pieces that just are standard, these have to be as part of your property tax. So when I look at that, um my recommendation is that we go to a twelve dollar ninety two cent, which you'll see on that far right column. As the new property tax rate that we would collect now, as you'll notice, it's going to collect seven million one hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Even though it's a lower property tax rate, because property valuations have increased, it generates more money. So as I'm building the budget, we're, even though we don't know what S S A is. So we don't know what that per student amount is going to be exactly, we kind of have a best guess, because if we're watching the House and Senate, what they're doing, we kind of have a good idea. We have to do a maximum property tax rate, because once you set this rate, you can go down. But you can't ever go back up, once you've had your public hearing and things. So we want to get the maximum amount of dollars, even if we aren't planning on spending them. Because we can't go back up and go, oopsie, we forgot something. So this is our maximum, even though it's a higher rate. Now, the idea behind this is one, property valuations are up. Also, um after meeting with, I talked with Piper Jeffrey and um. You know, we had to make some recommendations as far as our bond goes, they would encourage us that it looks like you used to do this, now you didn't do it this year. But you used to make an extra payment on your loan. And uh you didn't move this past year, so I talked to him and he said, I think this would be a really good idea. So the additional funds that we're getting, I plan on using that to make an extra payment of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. On a bond payment, which would actually pay off your bond one year sooner. And that saves taxpayers on interest and that payment, and so if you are looking at a facility plan. Um it would be one year sooner that that bond would be paid off. So even though our rate is going down to twelve dollars and ninety two cents. What they're going to see on this statement that they get March twentieth is the seven million dollars versus the six point six. They're not going to see the rate, even though it's going down, they're going to see the number grow. That's where I think if you have questions from the community, that's going to be their question is, gosh, why do you need an extra five hundred thousand dollars? You know, and you have to remind them, well, that's due to property valuations having increased, we're actually wanting a smaller tax rate um this year. So those are just things you might want to know, because this is the first year that they've ever gotten this statement before. So if we have more questions, it might be because this is, this is new to them. Okay, that's kind of page one, and that's really all I wanted to show you what was highlighted. Page two is just a property tax rate history of this district. And thanks to uh your prior S B O, I was able to get this information, it was very handy and I appreciate Sarah getting that to me. Um I also went back and looked at your certified enrollment, so you can kind of see the trend. You can see that, you know, you've lost twenty three students, then added five, lost one student, gained forty one, gained twenty six, gained twelve. So you can kind of see if you were looking at a statistical point of view, you'd say, looks like we're trending up, right? And and I think that is the case. Are we trending enough to build another building? Maybe not, with twelve students. But you have to consider, this is certified enrollment, number of people that live in your district, right? Number of students that live in this district, not the number of people that attend here. So just know that fourteen, fourteen are the number of students that live in the Atlantic School District. So when we talk about growth, it might not always be that number, because your open enrollment is is quite extreme.
And then also homeschooling, our number continues to grow with.
Homeschool, mm-hmm, yep, they definitely do.
Now, we only get a percentage for those, though.
Right.
We do, they're weighted.
Yeah.
Okay, page three A and three B is just an overview, this is more for Jenny and Jody. Because this is new to you, but this kind of tells you where our money comes from. First off, it comes from students that attend here, that's our biggest, like I said, that was fifty five percent of our money. Property tax, thirty percent. The rest of it is made up with federal grants, state grants, local dollars, things of that nature. So eighty five percent of it, we we kind of know what we're getting, and then it all comes down to federal and state grants. So this just gives you an overview of what does property tax cover? So property tax, as you can see, it's kind of that orange color, part of it goes to general fund. Part of it goes to your management. Management pays property and casualty insurance, pays the auto insurance, it's your um workers' comp. It's also what we're using for early uh incentive for your retirees that are going to be retiring early. Then you can see it also pays your debt service, it's what pays off our bond. Then it kind of drops down, you can kind of see it kind of stops to Pearl, um there's only one school district in the state that has Pearl, so that doesn't really even apply to us. But I I wanted to give this to you again, the second page has some terminology, sometimes that, and that's on page three B. If you've been in this a while, these start to make sense, but the little graph at the top left is kind of nice, because that does show you. Where are the average valuation? And this, this is an old document, but I still like it, because it does show state aid is that students that attend here, green section. So as you can see, you know, property tax is definitely important, because this is the blue pieces. But we rely so heavily on our student population, that is where our money comes from. The next page is this page four, again, I found this on I A S B, I thought it was fascinating, but I like this stuff, so you might be like, oh, that's too many numbers. But this tells you how much we've received per student over the years. Now, if we get three percent, which is what the House passed was three percent, Governor Reynolds recommended two point five, it has not passed the Senate yet. But once it does, uh if they go with three percent, that's seven thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars that we would get per student. Right now, you'll see it's seven, six, three, five, is where we're currently at. Now, I only show you that, because if you like the history of where we've come from, I always find that fascinating. But it's the next sheet, and we've shared this before, this is the new money. So page five shows you, if we did get three percent, and it's based on last year's count of fourteen, fourteen students, this has fourteen, twenty four. Which is what I A S B has, but it's fourteen, fourteen, it shows you we would generate four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. On the new money that we receive, because we have more students attending here. So when we talk about what projects we want to do, this is in addition to our regular everyday expenses that we've had, this would be addition. So that's where a lot of people will say, oh, if we're going to do some salary increases or benefits go up. We have some money to work with, now, will it take care of everybody? May not, so that's where we have to decide, how do we be good stewards of that new money and spend that four hundred and ninety thousand, it's a little bit less than that, it's about like four sixty. So we do get a partial student who is attending a private school, we have one in the uh community. And so we do get like twelve hundred dollars from them, so that is not quite figured in here either, they're still kind of working out the whole. S of kind of uh money that we're getting. But I wanted you to see that, again, then, if you'll notice at the top, which is, I don't know where they get their information, but I'm assuming it's a census. They determine what they think our enrollment's going to be, right? And so they've got us at that fourteen, twenty four, then they have us going up by ten students the next year, then they have us dropping. Forty students. And then they have us dropping a few more, what, thirty, something like that, so.
Well, just as a caveat, I talked to Sean Snyder at I S B about those numbers, and he said they just, I S B just gets them from Department of Education.
Okay.
And currently, he thinks we should take those numbers with a grain of salt.
Okay, good.
Because he his, he just says that. There's been a lot of upheaval at D E and they really have not, ever since COVID, their numbers are not, especially for life.
And part of that is, uh those are, again, people that live within our communities, that, you know, that kind of thing. So that doesn't take into consideration your open enrollment. And so they can tell us, we're going to lose forty students, we could gain forty E L L students, we could gain forty from other schools. Especially if you start thinking about you want to build your C T E program or build the um the services that you offer at the Achievement Center. That's one that I see some huge growth potential, uh from what I'm hearing from other schools, we're one of few schools that have that around the area. And so there might be some ways we can show growth, even when the statistics say you're going to lose forty kids. We we might not actually be doing that.
Are you ready for questions, Jeff?
Oh, yeah, did you have questions, sorry?
Well, I I'm just before I lose it. So this four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars of new money, or whatever that amount ends up being, if it's the two hundred and eighty nine, or it's if that. Is that accounted for in our general fund amount?
Yes, so in your, that that first page, I base this off that we're getting three percent.
And so why, why the, why is the general fund less this year or asking than last year's?
General fund, why is what less?
The levy, is that because of our U A B or why would that be?
You, why am I going to twelve point nine two instead of thirteen for property tax rate?
No, our, so our proposed property tax levy for twenty twenty five, if I'm understanding this right, is is four million six fifty nine, four sixty four? And so why is that less than our current levy?
One reason, you have no cash reserve levy that you can do, because you are maxed out. And so that is generated, so this is generated off the numbers that we put in. I don't have a mechanism to raise that without having a cash reserve levy, and the state tells us.
Right, no, I understand that, and so, but did we levy for cash last year?
Yes.
We did, that that's.
About six hundred thousand.
Okay, that that would be the difference.
And and why do we levy for cash? Because of special aid deficit, that's the main reason why people levy for cash.
Right.
Your your cash.
We're gonna, we're gonna basically spend down our.
Yes.
Budgets, what we're doing.
Yes.
Why, now, the instructional support levy, does that include an income surtax in that, that split between income surtax and property tax?
So, look at you, good job, you know, you know your stuff, that's awesome, so I S L. Is important, because you you can go through kind of two ways. So I S L is income surtax. Or an increase to property tax, I mean, there's different ways you can do a tax on a tax, which is income surtax. Or you can adjust your property tax, a lot of times you do that based on prior years, right? So I left it at what the prior years have been, um but I played around with it to see how it affected um your number. So if I moved it a lot, it caused your property tax um to move a little bit as well, but it. Didn't make enough difference to like really change it, because you can go up to like ten percent, and I think we're at like eight. So we're about where we probably should be with that I S L.
With the income.
With the income surtax.
So why, why did that jump so much?
Uh, what did the income?
The levy portion of that for I S L.
It it's a, just a mechanism that 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 eight percent that's in there generated more dollars. Than what it had doing eight percent last year, so the eight percent last year at fifty one thousand now is generating a hundred and seventy thousand.
And I guess I'm curious if that's off property tax or if that's off.
It is.
It's off property tax.
So that, so that is part of property tax.
Right, because the valuation went up so much.
It's because valuations.
I, that, that makes sense, so we're not seeing the income portion because. I, that that makes sense. So we're not seeing the income portion because that comes to us separately.
Yes.
And same thing with management levy?
So management levy, eh, the reason for increase, so last year, you all had asked about three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. I met with Kip Harris, who manages our, we're looking at about a twenty percent increase in property and auto insurance. So when I start figuring that, um and then that's also where you pay those early retirees that you agree to, and so that has to come out of there too. So three fifty-three sixteen was not going to be enough to cover the new rates for property insurance as well as the payments to the early retirees. So I bumped it up to four hundred thousand, and my numbers come out, if we're spot on, to three hundred and ninety. So we're going to need every bit of that four hundred thousand if property and auto do what Kip says. He says twenty is what I have to. He originally told me about fifteen. But he met with me today and said, I think you're right, let's keep that at twenty. We're just seeing a trend of uh the number of cases across Iowa are causing everyone's uh.
So that, that was gonna be my question. You feel that you have enough in there to cover early retirement? Because we could take from debt service if we needed more management.
Yep, so we, I went through all the the people that we had approved as well as classified and certified. I added in the new uh twenty percent rates for property and auto. Included all of that, plus we already had a fund balance in there, so we, it wasn't like it was at zero to begin with. I just didn't want that fund balance to drop significantly in case, because one of the things they're still talking at the legislature is using management for a couple of other things. So I didn't want to completely, you know, say, oh, we'll just stick with the three fifteen and we'll use our fund balance to cover anything extra. Because if there's a chance they do what they say they're gonna do with management fund, I want to have some money in there so we can access it. So the four hundred thousand covers the, what the need is for the district for next year. But there's still, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in there if we would need it for what they allow at the state level to do. Uh, the next page, which is page six, just gives you, again, we're still basing this off that we're going to get three percent from the governor once they sign that into action. This just tells you what are categoricals. So they give you money through the students, and we said that's seven thousand eight sixty-five. That's seven thousand eight sixty-five that they they give you, then they say, oh, by the way, that money has to be used in certain ways. We have to use it for T S S, we have to use it for professional professional development, early intervention, and teacher leadership, your T L C program. So then they kind of make that dollar amount a little bit smaller because it has to go in different pots that it can be spent in. So I wanted to include that, again, I'm using three percent as my S S A, although we don't know that yet. Um, which has been years since the legislature has not set the rate by this time. So this is kind of a first time in probably seven years. So this just tells you an overview. Again, you probably will not need this sheet. Um, but it's handy just to know that when we get that money for those students, there's little pots that it all has to go in. Okay, I also included on page seven, no, I'm sorry, I'm taking way too long. On page seven, I just included what that extra loan payment would look like. So up at the top is your actual payment you have to make. And then you have a revenue bond, which comes out of your local option sales tax at the bottom. The one in the middle is the one that I added, and what I did is really take one principal payment and added that on here. We we really could do whatever amount you feel comfortable with. I put this in because that's where I was looking for my twelve dollars and ninety-two cent rate. And I felt like that was pretty good to make one more payment, and that pays off your bond one year sooner as well.
Which paid it after what year?
Yeah.
Oh, let me see, I think, are you twenty-seven? I'm trying to think. I think twenty-seven.
Back to twenty-six.
So you could do it back to twenty-six? Now, getting a bond is not a quick process, so even if you said today, we're gonna do a bond. You're talking, it could be three years before really all that happens because of doing the master plan. Meeting with the community, following all the guidelines, taking it to a vote before the voters. Doesn't pass, take it back to the, I mean, you're talking, it could be, so that's why we have to be thinking now about master plan because we're really looking at three years out before that master plan. If you do a bond, will even take place because there is a lot of steps. So it's not like, hey, let's do one this fall and we'll get that sucker started in the spring. It doesn't work quite, you you're talking three years out.
I'm just thinking out loud, with that extra payment, I mean, I understand what you're doing by keeping the rate le- level. If we pay off early, we, and we, even if we started now, we're probably going to have a year or two where we have no debt service. Which means our rate is gonna drop dramatically.
You're right. In the property tax rate. And and here's, some people will say that's, that's the best thing to do, pay it off, save those taxpayers those dollars, and I agree. Boy, what is also hard is then trying to bring that property tax rate back up the year you decide to do a bond, and they've been used to seven and eight, you know, dollars on the thousand, and all of a sudden you're like, now we need fifteen. That kind of scares people because they have forgotten that they used to have to pay that, but you've got two or three years in there that they didn't. So I try to keep it level unless we need it. Unless you need it to drop, or unless you need it to go up, I try to keep it even. But it does show your property tax owners, hey, we have a great need here. And so if you have any, then it should go up, then you should do it. But don't, sometimes it's hard when it's a big jump. And so when you looked at that, I think it was at page two, your property tax rates, we're at the lowest we've probably have been in ten years. At twelve dollars and ninety-two cents, I mean, you're pretty, that's probably the low, it looks like, like fourteen maybe. Um, compared to other districts, you're, you're right in the average, you're not high for your rate when I look at other districts. So my recommendation would be to keep it around that twelve dollars and ninety-two cents, make an extra payment. But even if you get the bond passed in two years, because products now are taking so long to get to people because the workforce has changed and people aren't making things now. You could be another whole year, get the bond passed, but still be another year out of building or doing anything because products are taking the lead time is twenty weeks.
Well, so what I hear Christie saying is maybe we shouldn't make the extra payment then, right?
Or reduce that, I'm I'm just, I'm just saying, you're talking about a big dip, and if we are not going to be able to levy for cash we're not gonna be able to make up that levy rate. We're, we're gonna, I mean, I get it, it's a great problem to have. We wanna, we wanna um pay down our debt, and I appreciate that. I just, I'm questioning whether.
We definitely can. I did, I talked to Piper, I originally did not have it on there. And it it was, you know, significantly lower. And so I did reach out to Piper and say, what do you, what do y'all think? And he was the one who recommended doing an extra payment. Now, he doesn't live and breathe here, right? So he's not you, he's not your community, so he isn't the final say. But in his uh thing, he said he remembered working with the Atlantic District, and that was something that they wanted to be good stewards of the community that had supported that bond to say, we'll pay this off sooner if we can. So we don't have to. We, we can leave that in there. Now, that doesn't affect your cash reserve levy.
I mean, no, I I know that, but I I'm just saying, I I, I don't want to tie the hands of future boards who don't have the opportunity to levy, because I'm not, I'm imagining in two years, we're probably not gonna have the opportunity, still not gonna have the opportunity to levy for cash unless our.
No.
Our funds go down. So we won't have the opportunity to adjust that rate anywhere but management.
Um, or I S L.
Or I S L, and.
So let me finish because there's some more information I want to give you. Not that it'll change your mind, because I will support whatever you all want to do. I just don't ever want you to think, I I want to show you the whole picture of it because you need to see, you you have the opportunity to pay that down. But is that the direction the board wants to go? And and if you don't, if you're like, no, I think we wait on that, I'm fine with it. Um, again, we can lower the rate, so I can turn into the the county auditor tomorrow that we want twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. Before, then in our April meeting, when we do our second budget hearing, it's at that point, we have to have a real number. So you have a month. And at that point, we can say, oh, we really only want ten dollars. We can go down, which is why this is at its maximum. You can go down and then you can say, we changed our mind, we're not gonna pay that off, we want ten dollars. You're not gonna have anybody in the community say, oh, no, I wanted that twelve dollars, right? So you can lower it, and we don't have to make that decision tonight. All we're making tonight is that I have to have a public hearing date on this sheet that I send to them tomorrow. That's really what you're proving. I'm showing you the highest rate it can be right now is twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. So awesome. Yes, I don't want you to think you have to make a decision tonight. Okay, couple more things. We talked a lot. Last page. This is probably the only thing that's in Iowa Public School Finance is this U A B. And so what we're looking at, again, what I try to do is I tried to run some scenarios of the next two years, next year and the following year to see what that looks like, um as well as this year. Lots of information. We're actually only gonna look at the very bottom. So when you, in school finance, you get a maximum dollar amount that they say you can spend. But you have the money or you don't have the money. So our maximum for this current year is we can spend twenty-seven million thirty-six five oh nine. Right? So that's the max we can spend. You can see that at the estimated fiscal year twenty-four, it's about the third, about fourth lineup, twenty-seven oh three six five oh nine. You'll see that, that's our maximum that we can spend. But, so if you think of that as that's our credit card balance, that's our, the amount of money we can go on a trip. That, we got a brand new credit card, that's how much we can spend. Wow, we are doing great. We got a twenty-seven million dollar credit card. So then you put in your expenses, your miscellaneous income, what you think your sped deficit's gonna be, and you put all these what ifs in there. The difference between what you spend and what you're allowed to spend, the difference. So if you have a ten thousand dollar credit card and you have seven thousand dollars on it, the three thousand dollars between the two numbers, that's your U A B. That's the amount that you didn't spend, but you could have. Now, for the state of Iowa, you can have anywhere they like you to stay below fifteen percent. So they want you to use last year's count for this year's students, and they don't want you to put so much away in a rainy day fund that you're, you're allowing these students this year to not have the money that's kind of theirs, right? They brought in that seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So as a district, the difference between that maximum and the amount that you spend is called your U A B. And they want to make sure your U A B amount is not more, they'll let you go up to twenty-five, right? They won't let you go lower than five percent. So five percent to twenty-five percent is your range. They really prefer you to be around fifteen, ten to fifteen is where they want. So you're keeping ten percent of the money from last year's count to set aside for a rainy day. You're not gonna spend it. You got the, the ability to spend, you got twenty-seven million, but they only want you to spend up to, right? Okay, so this is, oh, this is important in Iowa school finance. Because if you are a district, and there are some that this has happened, if that's negative, if you overspend on your credit card you go before a committee, they look at your school district and they say, we'll give you two more years to fix it. Anybody remember Russell Iowa, who used to have a school there? Because if you don't fix it in two years, they close your school. There is no, they they'll work with you for two years, but that's it. If you spend more than your credit card, that's, right? So they kind of, they kind of work with you and they give you a little chart that says, as long as you're between these two numbers, you're okay. We are right on. So this year, we're at twenty-two percent our U A B. And like I said, fifteen is like the ultimate, in the perfect spot. Twenty-two, they don't want you higher than twenty-five, so we're not breaking any rules there. What that means, which is what, is because we don't, we are cash happy. And so we have a a greater limit, and our expenses are such that we have a twenty-two percent gap in there. Now, they also break it down to one other thing. It can't be all categorical. So all that money in between can't be P D and T S S and all those little categoricals. So then they make you re-figure and say, hey, they don't want you to have more than five percent of that in setting aside for some specific purpose. So that'll get you in trouble with the S P R C. If you're like, you got all this money, but they're like, oh, that's all earmarked for a special cause. That's not free money to spend if something would happen to your district. So that number I reviewed, last year you were at eleven percent. Little bit high. They want you to keep it at five percent or low. And so we're working this year, because when I came in, that was the rate it was. You are twenty-two percent with eleven percent of that being a categorical amount. So we're working hard to try to reduce that to get closer to five percent. I think at the end of this year, I'm gonna be close, if all my numbers come out, to about seven percent. So we're a little bit closer to where they want us. They don't really do anything if you're over, but they really would like you to be at five percent if you can. So we're at a good spot because we're at twenty-two percent. They want us around fifteen if we can, which means we're spending last year's count, we're spending it on this year's students. We're doing a good job. With this new rate that I've put in here at twelve dollars and ninety-two cents, that takes us, again, I'm running numbers. I'm doing a lot of what ifs. I'm doing if expenses go this way, if we give this much in salaries, if special ed turns out to be this way. So it's a lot of what ifs. I'm looking at a U A B of nineteen percent with our categoricals being seven percent. So nineteen, still higher than where we need to be, but it will help you. So if we need to ever reserve, do a cash reserve levy, we might be able to. Because we've kind of smaller, we're, we're spending more, right? And so then what happens is your, let's see, our, our maximum credit card right now is twenty-seven million thirty-six. So if you'll go over column, next year would be twenty-seven million oh eight seven. So it went up, what, fifty thousand dollars, didn't go up a lot, but our spending increased, right? Especially because you're hearing, we have more students coming here, we have greater need, Director of Student Services, you've got uh computer science that now is in place. You've got all these pieces that we have to spend a little bit more money because we're required to get some things in here. So the difference is going to pay a smaller gap. We go from twenty-two percent to nineteen percent. So that's still in a good position. Board has the right to say, no, we don't. So as we change that rate, that also flows kind of down through your U A B because if you get less money to work with, then your credit card drops. Now, I S L, where I S L comes into place, new per I S L, right? Instructional support levy, you hear that. What that is, a board can approve an I S L for up to five years, or you can take it out to vote to your community, and it's good for ten years. Yours is up in twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. So sometime before twenty twenty-seven, we'll need to take it to the community and vote on it. And it's good for ten years. The I S L increases that credit card limit, right? So instead of twenty-seven, the I S L, if you get that approved, it allows you to have a bigger credit card limit. Doesn't really give you more cash as much as it gives you more authority, more authority to spend, right? And so even though cash is king in most of our worlds, in the world of public finance and school finance it's the authority to spend the money more than cash. Because if you're Brody School and you have no cash, you go to the bank. Or a good investment, they're going to loan you the money and you get the money. If you don't have authority because you've maxed out that credit card, that's when the state gets involved and they give you two years to fix your situation. If it's just cash the issue, they'll, they'll say, go to the bank, go work with somebody, get some money. But if you don't have the authority, and that's what the difference is. Does anybody have any questions?
So you're saying, really, is that one needs to be aware that you're recommending to set next year's levy at its max possible, which is at twelve point nine.
Two.
Nine two.
Yeah. That's my recommendation at its highest. You can reduce that, and one way would be is not to make the extra tax payment. I would probably adjust anything else, that'd be the only.
And we could make a partial payment, right?
You do not have, seven forty is what I came up with.
Yeah.
You could make fifty dollars, you could make fifty thousand, you could do a half payment, you could do three fifty. You, you really have that. I didn't know what number to go with, so I kind of looked back at just the history, like the last three years. And it looks like you had made um a payment.
If you, if you could check and see when that, when our revenue bonds um complete, and then when that bond.
Yep.
Like that, that would help us kind of plan and know.
One of them is twenty twenty-seven. I do know that, but I'll get it.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know like how the alignment would be, you know, like almost like a deadline of when we would need to pass a bond in order for it to just roll.
I find it interesting, you know, just that uh tax rate history that each year uh the board has been able to reduce the levy amount. So that says you've got a very healthy budget. It's trending to to continue to lower itself and you're not.
It's not just up and down and each year, it's different than the previous year. It just looks like.
Part of that is because it's only thirty percent of your budget. Where we, where this district has done well, you had forty new students come one year. I mean, forty, you know, she was talking about your number here of that one point two million, you're like, yes, forty students at seven thousand. You know, that, that helps because then you don't need as much property taxes because your students are generating your income. So we want students to come here. That's why you guys have to work on your programming that you want for this district. What does our district look like? Because if other parents out there say, I wanna go to Atlantic, I want my kid to go to Atlantic. He's never gonna get this experience at this school like he will there, because maybe we offer something different or better. Then you have more kids that come. And when there is open enrollment, even though they weren't part of our certified enrollment, right? Cause that's just kids that live here. I get to bill that district for that many students and say, please, you know, come, they came to our district. And then they pay us. So they get, give us that money. So we still are able to educate them. So there's. Lots of things that you do at a board table that directly affects the budget and what I can do. Because as students come here, you make decisions about the facilities, facilities drive people. I'm sure your athletic facilities alone drove kids to come to this school this, because they are phenomenal. And so there's lots of things you can do as a board because again, you're looking at that big view, right? And then you give me the direction that says, we want this as a tax rate and I'll make that work. And then it just funnels down because then that tells me how much do I have to work with for benefits and salaries? What do I have? How much do I have for new programming? What do I have for new positions we wanna offer, right? And so then I have something to work with. But that's everything I have. That's a little bit longer than fifteen minutes. So for those of you that were keeping track, I apologize. I do like this stuff, so I apologize, but.
That was great. Thank you. No, good stuff. Okay, we will move right along to action items. We've already addressed item A, so we will move into action item B, which is the Schuler Elementary Elevator Repair. Uh, we have two bids.
Not anywhere close to each other.
Um, yes, and I asked that same question. One is forty six thousand, one's like twenty six thousand, they're quite a bit different. Uh, the company that came out on site was Otis Elevator Repair. They actually came, they looked at it. Um, they think they can do it, uh, this spring and think they can do it possibly like a Thursday, Friday, maybe Saturday. They don't think there'll be much interruption. Um, they also want to include like a maintenance agreement as well. That would allow, if there are little things they need to come in and tweak, that that is a part of that. Um, so Russell and I met and talked about that and I felt like, why wouldn't we go with that bid because it is quite a bit different? And he. He didn't know why the other one was so high, but he said they didn't actually come out and look at it. So they could have just been giving kind of that flat amount. Here's what we think it'll. It'll cost.
So your recommendation is to.
I moved, we approved the contract to Otis, uh, for twenty five thousand and some change for the Schuler Elementary Elevator Repair.
One second. Okay, Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean? Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Christie Pellet?
Yeah.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, next item is to set the public hearing date for the funding your twenty five certified budget for the first meeting. And I have Lisa's, and her little timeline here. Um, in which she suggests that that first public hearing date be March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
If we can. It, it aligns with our regular board work session, so it does have to be a separate agenda. And so we would do it by thirty and then close that and go into.
Have a motion.
I will move that we hold the, uh, first certified budget meeting on March twenty seventh.
Second.
Okay, Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren? Christie Pellet?
Yeah.
Jody Goodrich?
Yep.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
I was saying you were shutting the lights off, so I got sidetracked. Sorry about that.
So the, uh, next item, action item and action item D, which is to set the public hearing date for a twenty four, twenty five school calendar.
Actually could do that the same night as twenty seven, if you would like. I just didn't know where everybody wanted to.
And that works for timing wise. Hopefully we have something back from the legislatures.
We are hoping we have something. Do you wanna tell them what that is? That's the holdup. I know you mentioned Cam was holding up.
I, I just mentioned, I heard that, that they weren't setting their calendar. Now, I know we have a proposed calendar and I don't think we've changed. It just depends whether you can, the way things hit, whether you use those couple days, uh, after the state fair prior to the twenty third.
Yes.
Had they start, they need, so I don't know if we wanna make that adjustment in our calendar, but that gives us some opportunity to see if that's a function, I guess.
We could put two calendars together.
Yeah.
If they change it, we could do the elevator start.
Yeah, sure.
If they don't change it, then it's like August twenty third. Would you want an earlier start? I mean, is that?
You can start at the week of the twenty third.
Just because I think the twenty third is a Friday.
It was a weird start, so then you start.
Okay, yeah, if you could, calendars, that'd be great.
Okay, so do we wanna do that on the twenty seventh? Is there a motion?
I move that we have the public hearing date for the twenty four, twenty five school calendar set for March twenty seventh at five thirty.
I'm second.
Okay, Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Christie Pellet?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean?
Yes.
I'm eager to set the public hearing date for funding your twenty five for our second budget meeting. Um, and looking at, uh.
We actually could do it the tenth. The reason I added it to this agenda. Um, the tenth is about the earliest we can do it for me to get, you have to have it in the paper. More than ten days, but less than twenty days. So to meet all my newspaper guidelines, uh, April tenth would be the earliest, or we could have it the twenty fourth. I feel like if we know where we wanna go with this, that we could have it earlier as long as SSA comes in before the tenth.
Yeah.
Let's hope.
Let's hope. But whatever you wanna do, it's fine with me.
I think that the tenth honestly follows more along with what our normal process would be.
Yes.
Advises us to stick to that.
Again, we set the public hearing date for the twenty five budget meeting on April tenth.
Yeah. All second. Okay, Christie Pellet?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Laura McLean?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Okay, we have some upcoming dates, and you know, and I don't know whether we wanna consider a change if we're having a public hearing. Um, we, we may wanna consider instead of doing our, our work session in the Achievement Center to have it back here.
Okay, that's perfect.
Uh, so that would be an upcoming date on spring break, March twenty eighth and twenty ninth, and then we wrap around at Eastern, have the first and second. Um, and then there is a summit on student success, June eleventh, twenty twenty four. And we can start to have some registration for that at the end of this month. So, you know, this would be an opportunity. We're just like such a learning board, right? You get board, board points for that, I'm sure. So. Um, finally, our board meeting evaluation for tonight, our question, I guess I would ask to all of you is, did we treat each other with respect?
I felt respected.
She treated me very.
No.
They're gonna have to separate you.
It's the D in him.
All right, I, I, I think that to me that we're, we're good, or tired, whatever. Um, motion adjourned.
I move adjourned.
Second. Second. I'm in favor. I'm needing a adjourn at eight forty.